Welcome to the April 5th Troy City Council meeting. This evening, we asked that if you have a cellphone or electronic device, would you please turn it off completely? It affects our sound system, even if it's on vibrate. This evening, we're pleased to have with us Brian Taber from the Kensington Community Church, who will give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Brian.
Lord, just thank you so much for this beautiful weather. Thank you for the opportunity for all these people to come together and serve on this council, Lord. I just thank you for their servant's heart. I pray that you give them wisdom, Lord, tonight, as they make decisions for this community, Lord. I thank you that if we humble ourselves and turn to you, Lord, that you'll heal our land, and we thank you for that. We thank you for that promise. And we just pray tonight that you be glorified, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks to see you again. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Brezamio?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howlack?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
I'm present. This evening, we begin with a presentation. We're pleased to have with us United States Army Captain Brad Catton, and we also have Sergeant Brian Paquette, who has accompanied him. And they are going to be receiving a proclamation in recognition of Military Community Covenant April 2010. And so I'll go down to the front to present on behalf of council and the community. Gentlemen? Whereas the Community Covenant Program is a formal commitment of support by state and local communities to active guard and reserve soldiers and their families. And whereas the Community Covenant Program is designed to foster and sustain effective state and community partnerships with the Army to improve the quality of life for soldiers and their families, both at their current duty stations and as they transfer to other states. And whereas the strength of service members comes from the strength of their families, and the strength of families is supported by the strength of the community. Whereas the strength of the community comes from the support of employers, educators, civic and business leaders, and its citizens. And whereas it is vitally important that local communities across America be aware of and recognize the sacrifices of soldiers and their families. And whereas while Community Covenant is an Army program, it extends to the other military services as well, recognizing that many community efforts support all service members and their families regardless of the uniform that they wear. And whereas the city of Troy recognizes with sincere appreciation the commitment and sacrifices service members and their families are making every day. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Troy declares its commitment to building partnerships that support the strength, resilience, and readiness of service members and their families. Be it further resolved, the Troy City Council supports the signing of a Military Community Covenant in partnership with Oakland County and other local government officials. And this is presented this 5th day of April. Sign by myself and all members of council. Thank you. This is, yes, and this is important for them to be here, and we have a member here in the audience who is retired Brigadier General Donald Che, who is of course very proud of his Army service, and I know that you are all very close. Thank you.
On behalf of Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Payne and the Great Lakes Recruiting Battalion, I'd like to thank the community of Troy, the city leaders, and the mayor, the council members for this covenant. And moving forward, we'd like to offer our services. If there's any fitness activities, leadership development, or anything that the members of council or the city government want to pursue in a partnership, we're more than willing to join you and further this community covenant and other ventures. Thank you.
We're all so proud of all of our service services and the folks that, on our behalf, have served and continue to serve. So it's nice to do that recognition, especially on the day following Easter. This evening, we have no carryover items or public hearings, and so we go directly to public comment. And I remind folks that public comment is limited to five minutes, and it may be on a postponed item, a regular business or consent agenda item, or any other item that the public wishes to comment on during that time. And I will call upon the folks that have signed up for that purpose in the order that they have signed up. So our first speaker this evening is Janice Daniels.
Good evening. Good evening, council staff. At the last council meeting, I brought up in good faith the fact that County Executive L. Brooks Patterson has been able to balance the Oakland County budget for three years by using a process that could be called budget tasking. After the council's break that evening, Mary Kerwin came back from your private meeting and posed a question to Mr. Zerlich, something to the effect of, "Well, don't you work with your department heads to balance the budget?" And Mr. Zerlich's response was, "Well, of course, that's elementary budgeting 101," with sort of a scoffing tone, which I kinda took as an effort to brush off my comments. So I'm back again tonight to say that, no, that isn't what I meant. What we might refer to Brooks Task Plan as maybe budgeting 102. I'm not saying that you go to your department's heads and play footsies with them, asking them if they can give you budget-cutting advice. What Brooks did is that he went to his department heads with a specific task plan. It's my understanding that he looked at his budget shortfall, he prioritized the areas in question. For example, the police department is of utmost importance, so their percentage of cut should be the least. But then he went to his department heads and gave each of them the task of finding that percentage of cuts that would be required in their department to reach a balanced budget. I think that the idea is that if the department head can't find the areas to cut, then maybe they need to be replaced by somebody below them who can find those areas. On another issue, I was trying to catch up with my reading over the weekend, and I found the September 24th, 2009 edition of the Troy Times. In that edition, in this edition, there's a front-page article about the Troy Days Festival that just ended the week before this issue came out. In the article, Troy's own Cindy Stewart was quoted as saying that the festival funds itself and that it made more than $100,000 in 2009. She went on to say that the Troy Days Committee was completely run by volunteers. I don't necessarily know how to interpret this article that I just quoted from in light of the fact that this year's Troy Days has been canceled right after the good citizens of this city said no new taxes. It makes me really angry. Was this our payback? Was Cindy Stewart misquoted or misinformed? I don't think she was misquoted because I know the work that Terry O'Parka does at the Troy Times. And I also don't think that she was misinformed because I can see how efficient and effective she is. So it seems pretty clear that you don't want to take the advice of some of the citizens who have spoke in support of an across-the-board city employee wage and benefit package reduction of, say, 5% to 10%, which would begin to put the wage and benefit packages of city employees more in line with the wage and benefit packages of the private sector, at least those in the private sector who still have a job, and those in the private sector who even know what it's like to have a pension package or a retirement account. Because I can assure you, many of us don't have those perks even after a lifetime of working and struggling to make ends meet. I'm calling upon the Troy City Council to rise above the fray and lead the city with dignity and respect for the 12,600 taxpayers who decided to keep their limited resources to spend in the way that they choose to prioritize their own budget rather than giving more money to the bottomless pit of government's need for money. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Klein.
Good evening.
Anything.
I want to speak to, I want to speak to the issue of essential city services, mostly the library. My mother was a reader, that means for me. She read beyond what she was required, what was required of her. She read nonfiction as entertainment. She was a homeschooler. I'm 67. She taught me to read when my first-grade teacher was having difficulty teaching me. She taught me with the words "sound it out." I now have a master's degree in reading, Oakland University. I owe it to my mother. She gave me the Ferndale Library. Libraries are essential for all of us. They are particularly essential for children. Children have no vote. I owe an apology to city manager Zerlich. I called him a Lancelot from Camelot. Not so. I was thinking Kennedy. I have been reading Edward Klein. Joe Kennedy was no Arthur. Rose was very abused. The pain of the Kennedy era and Klan was not Camelot. Troy bears no resemblance to that time. Actually, Troy is a miracle and of greater importance than what was happening in Washington. The night I read, the library could close. I turned cold with fear. I recognize that majority rules. Mayor Schilling has said the people have spoken, and they have. Kerwin and Schilling have also talked about term limits. To me, that means there is a time when your work responsibility is done and others need to begin to share the work. We all owe those who have given the city of Troy to us. It is an incredible city. Michigan has changed. There are those who do not understand why. A book was written in 1998. The book was, is, "Who Moved My Cheese?" With the changes in global economics and producing, the traditional cheeses of Michigan have indeed been moved. The United States of America, originally the most powerful in the world, is now challenged by incredible changes. Our cheese, car manufaction, has been moved all over the globe. The interesting thing, we think we can restore it to a former time. We are in a challenged time. We need to think and reason to a greater degree than we have ever before. We need to use a reference library, and the vote was, "Close it." Our children need multiples of books beyond the ability of any parent to pay. The vote, "Close the doors." The essential services of this city provide health, intelligence, history, and protection, and the vote, "Stop it. Close it." I would never recommend to anyone to buy a home in the future, Troy. I will walk away from my mortgage. Actually, morte is French for death. I want another millage. I cannot do it alone. I am not political. I cannot run an effective campaign nor be a leader. What I can say is, we are looking for someone willing to be brave and brave the issues of our new global world. I will stand in your bravo when someone understands essential services in Troy had been pulled from us, a former jewel of a city in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Waldron.
I'm Robert Waldron. I appreciate the opportunity of addressing the mayor and the council. I represent a new formed committee, which is Rochester Road Neighborhood Business Coalition. Coalition, excuse me. I appreciated the time the mayor spent with me. I actually introduced her to my daughter as Mayor Stein, and so even after that, she listened to me, and she apparently presented this to you, and I appreciate that. She's indicated a willingness to support us. By that, I don't mean money or help or anything. I'm just saying your general acknowledgement that we need to do something. I'm a firm believer that when you're challenged, you need to race to the occasion. The people who are going to make this city survive are the ones that are left, the businesses that are left, not the K-Marts, not the people that have all flown, okay? What's going to make this city happen is you and I and the other businesses that are still here surviving and showing them that there's nothing wrong with Troy. There might be something wrong with some things that are going on, but we can turn that around. And I'm fashioning this under the fact that, first of all, I run a business in Troy. It just happens to be a car wash, and somehow they put a dirt road out in front of me, and I realize now that I know why people don't build a car wash on a dirt road. And today, I have a little funny story to tell you. I said, "I'm a little disappointed sometimes." One of the two, couple of positive things that come out of this when you're challenged is that the people on Rochester Road now, when they let you in, they've been very polite, and there's like this little wave. And I think we ought to get somebody to do a human interest story, that the people aren't giving you the other wave, they're giving you this wave, and they're smiling at you, and we're all actually saying, "Okay, we're all in this. We got to survive. Let's just, okay?" Well, I feel that way with the businesses, and I had the opportunity, number one, to walk around on the weekend with my granddaughter and her friend to meet some of the business owners, and I probably know about 25 of them. I've known them for quite a while. And they all signed on to this program. So we've actually turned around, and in a matter of 21 days, we will have, number one, come up with the idea, and number two, implemented it in 21 days. We will have the people signed up. We will have the coupon books going out, which I'll explain that to you in just a moment. And it kind of explains it in there, but there's one caveat in there that indicates how we can raise $100,000 a month for charities. I think you'd be interested in hearing it. And it's nobody's, it's actually money that we, as a business owner, are extending. It's going to be like, if you come into my business and I tell you, "If you give me $2, I'll give you $4." Now, you might have to think about that for a little while, and if you do, then I'll sit down and explain it to you. But most people would jump at it. I think we're going to do that. And I literally think that with the 40 or 50 businesses that we're going to have in this, we can raise $100,000 for four charities in one month, and we can do that for several months in a row. And if I have the participation that I want in the city's endorsement, we can, now, you might think I kinda resemble the Wright Brothers, and you think I'm crazy and the plane isn't going to fly. And if it's because it's never been done before, we'd never fly again. So what I'm telling you is, some of the stuff I've come up with is a little bit never been done before, but the plane is going to fly, and what it does, I'd like you all to be on board. And the thing I'm going to tell you right now is that these businesses are hurting. Now, you may have all thought that I gave you a car wash to go down there. No, I gave you a car wash to drive down the road, and if you haven't been down there because they said, "Don't go down there," I want you to go down and see what these people are dealing with. Now, today, I thought, "I know what's happened." You know what? They flooded the road, and I thought, "Well, okay, I got to tear down one of the buildings." You know what? I can sell it as lakefront. I'm going to have lakefront on the Rochester Road. It's great. No, I really don't want to do that. What I really want to do is try to make a statement. So we are going to shut one of them down, and when we do, we're going to make a statement over there that says, "We're here. We're going to stay here, and we're not only going to survive, I'm going to turn around and do something that never has been done before." We are going to have these businesses on Rochester Road within three or four months telling you that they're doing more business now than when the road was open, okay? And that's my goal, and all these other things have been done, but I don't think there's anything, and it may be a little lofty goal because I'm actually going to have an airplane that's running and flying, okay? And if we do this, and I hope I don't sound too off the wall because my wife says, "You got to calm down. You sound like a nut." And I said, "Well, the people that tried to fly the airplane," I said, "I'm sure everybody said they were a nut, too." I'm not a nut. I'm enthused about it. I've gotten the enthusiasm from the other people. I can't do this alone. It's going to take, my business plan or my, the way I think the businesses are going to survive is just like the neighborhood survives. When you've got a problem in the neighborhood and they form a neighborhood watch, and everybody gets together and knows each other, and they help each other, you find out not only do you like the people, but you saved your neighborhood, okay? What we're doing, this is a business watch, and we're saying, "We're all hurting. Let's help each other. Let's spin our customers and take a customer base and actually spin it around so that your customer becomes mine, that my neighbor, Mr. Pacano, he becomes mine. They go over to Lukic's, he becomes mine. Ridley's is mine, okay? That all those people, we're sharing." And we basically said, "Look, let's work together instead of, you know, working against." Is that my five minutes? Okay, I'll wrap it up, and all I want to say is, I would like to explain the details to you. Please look at it. Don't dismiss it because it hasn't been done before. Take a look at Rochester Road. We now have 90 businesses on there, and this is how the politicians do it. They kind of, yeah, okay, just five minutes more. If my wife is here, she'd be kicking me. I really appreciate your listening to this, and what I'm saying is, we will make it happen, but we need a little help and support from you guys, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Council members in the audience, during council comments, I will be talking a little bit about the proposal that they're going to do for Rochester Road with the coupon book and in promoting the efforts, and also about the great job that they said that Dan's excavating is doing on the road project there. And so it's an effort for them to do something positive for themselves and for the community. So next, we have James Savage, who wishes to speak, and he's often talked about Rochester Road. And he'll probably be supporting this effort.
Well, I certainly support the comments of the previous speaker, in fact, that it's a community endeavor. However, before I get to my main comments, there is an item when you get to H. 7. I'm curious as to what the administration considers a reasonable hourly rate paid to the Carlisle-Wattman Company. Okay, I was not able to attend the last meeting, but watching the replay on TV, I was quite dismayed to see the personal attacks on Mr. Howlack and Mr. Fleming for their part in the February 2030 election campaign. It's my understanding that other council members took active roles on behalf of the YES campaign, like going door-to-door and campaigning and even financing the campaign. Now, while some people might see that as unethical, I do not, and I don't recall any personal attacks for that. I believe that Mr. Howlack's letter was, oh, to believe that Mr. Howlack's letter was responsible for the outcome of the February vote, I would have to refer back to about six years ago to the convention center issue. That issue was initiated by management and supported by most of the council. It was a long and heated campaign which cost the city a lot of money. I was convinced that it was, in the long term, bad for Troy, and I spoke out strongly against it. And incidentally, there are hundreds of convention centers sitting idle right now that are not being used. When the votes were counted, and 80% of the voters said no, I could have let my ego run wild in the belief that I had swayed 80% of the Troy voters. But that was, of course, not the case. The opinion I had expressed at that time were in line with the opinions of the voters, and I believe the same goes for Mr. Howlack and Mr. Fleming. They had stated that they preferred other options, and it appeared that voters felt the same way. I believe the administration made a very grave error when they proposed the ballot issue. There was no evidence that the vote would succeed. Two years earlier, the voters had made that clear. The methods that the administration used, the threats and intimidation, pitting one group of citizens against the other, neighbors against neighbors, even family members against family members, these methods were deplorable, but four out of seven council members approved them. I believe the biggest problem facing Troy is building faith in their government and faith in the community. Over the years, we have faced a series of contentious issues that have produced a lot of negative publicity. When you rehired the city manager, I expressed my fears in this regard, and sure enough, within one year, he produced the contentious issue of all time. At this time, I believe a statement from you, Mayor Schilling, acknowledging that the tax increase proposal was a mistake and an apology for putting the residents of Troy through this ordeal. I believe accountability is in order, and, Madam Mayor, I respectfully suggest that you consider resigning your position so the city can move forward under new leadership. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Peters, Richard Peters. Good evening.
Well, before I get my, Rochester Road on 18, it's kind of confusing because there's, on one side, it says no turn, the other side, it doesn't, and I believe it confuses folks. And if you get, you know, the people behind you start beeping their horns, you kind of pay attention to that. So I think that ought to be, you know, looked at, looked into. I want to talk a little bit about the energy bill tonight. I've read somewhere that the Great Lakes were a river system, and we know, I think, the Mississippi, and it's a little bit about the glaciers, I think. If, I don't know, I'm not an expert in this area, no, maybe Martin, I know you went geology, weren't you? Didn't you have a geology degree at Michigan? Yeah. Now, I don't know if that affects that or not, but, you know, I wonder if we could take a look, if our government somehow could take a look at that. And also, on the bill, I'd like maybe a five mile an hour reduction in the national speed limit in order to maybe preserve energy, and like President Carter did in 1980 when he had a, not a refinery, but these caves or these cauldron or whatever it is under the ground, that maybe they could have like for a three-month area, that they could put oil, particularly in the peak driving area, so we could manage our oil supplies a little better. So that's kind of all what I have to say, and I would hope maybe they keep Troy Days to, you know, on. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up. Is there anyone that we missed under public comment? Yes, sir, please come up and give us your name. Is this on an agenda item or not?
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Forrest Wall. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs and Industry Relations for the Building Industry Association of Southeastern Michigan. I'm here to speak tonight on the proposed outsourcing of the Building Department Services, which is Agenda H. 9.
Yes.
Our organization- Our organization is a trade association representing over 800 member companies in the area. They include residential builders, developers, remodelers, apartment owners, and related suppliers. Let me start by saying that I do not envy the position that all of you are in or the difficult decisions that you need to make. All of us, whether in municipal government, small business, trade association management, or even on an individual level, are having to make hard choices during these economic times. And I commend you for your thorough process that you're going through to explore all the avenues for savings. Many of our members have worked or are currently working with your building department to provide new housing, home additions, and renovations. I know I can speak on behalf of those members in saying we feel very fortunate to work with such an effective building department. I personally work with many building departments throughout the region and I can tell you that you should be very proud of the department that you have in place. The expertise, the professionalism, the customer service, and the management of the department is exceptional. There have been many times we've agreed and there's been a few times we've disagreed, but through it all, we maintain a great deal of respect for Mark Steinbach and for the professionals on his staff. The Building Industry Association of Southeastern Michigan supports local government efficiency efforts, whether that be through resource sharing, consolidation, or even outsourcing where it's appropriate. But when all things are equal and assuming that the building department can operate on a revenue-neutral basis, we unequivocally recommend the retention of an in-house department to provide this vital service to the citizens of the community. With that said, we ask that as you consider this privatization alternative, please keep in mind how important a well-functioning department, building department, is to the economic development potential of a community as well as to the long-term tax revenue for local government. Furthermore, we would ask that this process remain as transparent as possible so that there's no questions about the decision that is ultimately made. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And a mayor, councilmen, women. My name is Don Pratt. I am a builder and developer in southeastern Michigan. I have built hundreds of homes in the city of Troy. I have had my office here from time to time through the last 25, 30 years. I have two sons that live in the city of Troy and I have a daughter that lives in the city of Troy. Fortunately, I built their homes for them. But I'm here tonight not to speak to you, and by the way, this is on H7 also, on privatization of the building department. I'm here tonight because I am also Chairman of the Construction Code Commission in the state of Michigan. And I'm also, I appear as an expert witness in several construction-related cases throughout the state of Michigan, primarily in southeastern Michigan. I have had the fortune of being able to go into hundreds of homes in southeastern Michigan and look at the quality of workmanship that several of our fellow builders have performed. I want to tell you that I want you to be cautious of what you're attempting or what you are going to do here this evening, probably. The private companies that I have seen throughout southeastern Michigan for code enforcement are not all they're cracked up to be. I am not familiar with the company that you're about to hire. I have no experience with them at all, but I can tell you from being in hundreds of homes throughout southeastern Michigan, the quality inspections are not the same as when we have men and women inspecting homes that are employees of the community. They have a stake in the community, not like many of the other organizations that are out there for money only. I want you all to understand that you have a phenomenal building department and as Forrest Wall had indicated to you, we've had our ups and downs. We've had our disputes, we've gotten along, and we've had some arguments, but we've always come out on what I consider to be the fair end of the stick. In other words, we have debated and we have made a conclusion and the decision was met by all of the parties. I'm really here tonight because I feel very strongly about what I'm saying. The privatizing of a building department is not necessarily the best thing you can do. I want you to take a long, hard look at that when you're making a decision, and it is going to be a tough decision. And I want to also commend the building department that you have today. It is one of the finest and I have seen many, many building departments. Matter of fact, one of my jobs as the, as a Commissioner in the state of Michigan for the Construction Code Commission is to look at building departments and determine whether they're doing the job for the citizens of the state of Michigan that they were intended to do. I am here to tell you that your building department has done that job and putting them out and hiring someone else is not necessarily what I consider to be the right decision. With that, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Schlesch. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the time to speak on this important subject. I'm currently Vice President of the Michigan Association of Home Builders and as Don Pratt, I'm past President of the Southeastern Michigan Builders, Home Builders Association. I know what it's like. I've talked to John and it's a sign of the times and I just, there's not a whole lot I don't think can be done outside of what is going to possibly happen tonight, except I do wish that the company that does come in would give close preference to those that are in the, your department. You have an excellent building department. We've had a quarterly, we have a meeting with the builders and those in the building department as well as somebody from, usually from the city manager's office where we can go over issues that happen in the construction industry and in residential as well as commercial. And that's a very nice opportunity to go over these different situations. I would hope that we would be able to keep something like that going and again, all of your inspectors, we don't always agree with them, but they are some of the finest that we see in our industry and I would hope that they could be used in the future and that hopefully we'll see our industry turn around and maybe things would get back to a little bit of normality, but it's going to be a tough situation that we're up against in our industry and in the state of Michigan as well. But thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration on this very important subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on an item in public comment? Seeing none, then I will, we'll continue on with the balance of the agenda and there are no postponed items this evening, so we'll go to regular business. There, our first item is a, H3 is a 2010 tri-party program resolution with the Oakland County and the Board of Road Commissioners.
No, Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltran.
Resolved that Detroit City Council hereby approves the cost-participation agreement between the city of Troy and the Board of Road Commissioners for Oakland County for the 2010 tri-party program at an estimated cost to the city of Troy of $132,053 and is hereby authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltran, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin. My comment is I'd like to reinforce the comments that I made at our last meeting about any of our efforts to work with the county and the Oakland County Road Commission for their roads, which are county roads that are within the city of Troy, that we make every effort to get all of our funds back from them that we expend. I realize in this agreement that it's a three-party program and it has worked well, it has served us well over a period of years, but with a different financial situation, there might be some things that we could work on with the county at that time. Mr. Zerlik, did you want to comment?
I agree with your statements, Your Honor, and one of the items that I wish to have a policy discussion about, when we talk about capital reserves, does pertain to what we want to do with the major street system that's controlled by Oakland County and the unfunded needs that we have in all of our infrastructure projects.
Okay, thank you. Other council comments? Councilwoman Kirwin?
The resolution includes information that we must have the support of our four county commissioners.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I've heard you in fact ask specifically about this with two of them. I haven't heard from the other two, but we would certainly want that support and need that in order for this to pass and we would expect all of our county commissioners to work on our behalf to see that we have our fair share of road funding.
That's correct. Any other comments? If not, then the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew.
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltran.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howlack.
Yes.
Kirwin.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. H4 is our core network upgrade that has to do with our electronic functions and delivery of service. Do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltran.
Whereas the city is relying more heavily on electronic functions for delivery of service, it is imperative that the city's network infrastructure performs at its peak as well as being stable and reliable to minimize downtime. And whereas expanding the use of virtualization improves the ability to recover in the event of failures, therefore, be it resolved that Detroit City Council hereby approves and authorizes the purchase of replacement hardware, services, and software as detailed in attachment to B for an estimated total cost of $51,300 with yearly maintenance fees of $3,530 that may change annually based on the CPI for the Detroit, excuse me, Ann Arbor area utilizing approved purchasing procedures, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second? Moved by Councilwoman Beltran, seconded by Councilwoman Slater that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howlack.
I have a process concern and it's something I've brought up periodically and this is essentially a bid waiver and I do believe and I feel strongly that it's in our best interest to, to clearly state in our resolutions that, that it is a bid waiver when it is. I don't, I don't see it here unless I'm misheard and because we do have the charter requirement relating to purchases and I think we need, and we do have the allowance to waive it and I think that there's a legitimate case to do so. I'm just asking that in the future when we have these sorts of things, if we can have some sort of a standard resolution that more clearly outlines how we're acting in conjunction with the charter.
Mr. Zerlik.
I'll be happy to make that up.
Thank you.
Any other council comments on this?
No, Madam.
Councilwoman Kirwin.
This is one of a series of resolutions we have before us tonight which really are attempting to streamline and get us up to date on our infrastructure in terms of technology and that it's much needed. It's needed if we're going to work smarter, with fewer, and get more done. So I will support this as well.
I appreciated the report being complete and explaining about the necessity of this and I concur with the comments. Any other comments? Councilwoman Fleming?
I believe we're working with an outside firm. Is it New World Systems or New World Alliance? I can't remember. Just New World Systems. Did they give any input on this core network upgrade to us at all? Because I know they're experts in this area too.
Actually, Mayor, Mayor of City Council.
Yes, this is, this is, I can't, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes. No, I can barely hear you.
Is that that?
This is Paris Gavitt. Can you sit on for her?
Yes.
Do you want to come to this mic? Mrs. Paris Gavitt?
Is that better? Yes. Actually, we talked to CDWG and their network group and they came in and we sat down and basically they made the recommendation as to how we should go ahead and set this up and there's services included for them to come out and help us implement to make sure it's done to the best of their ability.
CDWG?
CDWG, yeah. It's a very large firm and they've got, we use them, they're on the NIPA contract and actually that's a contract that we've previously received a resolution from council to use. So we definitely use them to pick their brain and come up with a configuration.
Okay, I think I read that, but then we have this New World.
New World is a financial package.
Is that totally different?
Yes.
That's mostly financial.
That's just the financial package.
So that has nothing to do with the core network?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, council? Thank you, I appreciate it. And then we'll have the vote. Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltran. Pass. Fleming?
Yes.
Howlack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is a bid waiver for Troy today and we have a report and a resolution in front of us. We have someone who wishes to move the resolution.
Mayor.
Councilman Slater.
I'll move the resolution as printed.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Beltran that we approve the bid waiver for Troy today as printed in the agenda. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howlack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltran?
Yes.
Motion passes. H6 is a bid waiver also for Hanson Information Technology replacement. We have a resolution before us.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman, Mayor Potem Fleming.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltran that we approve the resolution as printed for Hanson Information Technology replacement, a bid waiver. Discussion. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howlack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltran?
Yes.
Fleming? Yes.
Motion passes. H7 is the Planning Consultants' Services Contract. I'm going to ask if we could table this resolution and I will give the following reasons and then we'll see what council decides. Until council has sat down to discuss the restructuring of city government in another workshop and our budget study session, we have not yet determined what we are going to do with regarding the planning department and the number of people to use for planning and some of the other things that we are doing within the city. And so therefore, before we renew a contract, I would like to have that discussion and that is my thinking. It is not that I am unsatisfied with It is not that I am unsatisfied with Carlisle Wortman in any way. It is simply that I think we need to have a discussion about whether we want to move in this direction or some other direction. Council, do you have comments? Mr. Zerlik, do you have comments?
Sure, and my comments are more in the form of a question to my staff. Mr. Miller, how long have we had a planning consultant services contract with Mr. Carlisle?
We have had one approximately 10 years.
Okay. And is that planning consultant services contract independent of what we're doing for restructuring the organization?
No, it is not independent in that Mr. Carlisle is involved in all aspects of consolidation, privatization of those services, and providing sort of a link between all of it to the overall management team.
Here's the concern that I have, if I may.
Yeah.
And that is that early on, we tagged Mr. Carlisle to essentially have a public-private partnership in restructuring Troy City Government. And what that meant was that, in addition to my staff and myself, with our municipal experience, I wanted to bring in someone with private sector experience to determine what methodologies we could utilize to see if certain departments should be privatized. And that would give us a more global perspective. And in so doing, Mr. Carlisle, who has about 70 or 80 other municipal clients, would not be allowed to bid on any of the services, even though he has his own company that could do planning, zoning, engineering, code enforcement. We needed, and still need, that type of input in determining methodologies and analyzing what we're going to do for privatizing other departments that we're in the midst of doing. I would recommend that if you want to discuss what we're doing with the planning department, that would be an independent discussion from what we're doing with, say, the building department tonight, or with the golf course two weeks from now, items that we'll be looking at in the future with engineering. These are things that involve Mr. Carlisle in terms of his methodology as a consultant to the city in restructuring, not necessarily to use the employees that he has to perform work like building inspection services or code enforcement services. I really do see a difference between the two, with all due respect.
I know that there are some cities that do not use consultants for, in this matter, that they do the planning decisions within their own cities, and some that do, of course. And I was just looking at if we were ready to, and of course, this is an extension of the original agreement for five years. And I, we really had not had a thorough discussion yet as a council about some of the areas that we're going to be going in, about number of employees and which positions they're going to be in, et cetera. And so that's the only reason why I bring it up at this point. I don't know if other council members have comments, or if they just wish to go ahead and just do this.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howarlag?
With the contract, it's my understanding that Mr. Carlisle is the only consultant that we've had, if we've had this for 10, if we've been doing this for 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And when we started out, it was essentially planning consulting services, and it appears to have expanded, or perhaps I could restate that, the services that he's been performing for the city have expanded in the last nine years. Is that correct?
I would state that it's still within the boundaries of the contract. It talks about planning services and other consultation. But I will state, also agree, that initially, it was more planning and zoning exclusively, and it has evolved more into a management consultant role.
Put more succinctly, in the first 12 months of that contract, how much did we pay Carlisle Wortman?
Pardon me, can you ask that again?
In the first 12 months of our services with Mr. Wortman and his firm from 2001 to 2002, how much did we pay?
I don't know off the top of my head, 2001.
You want us to renew a contract, and you don't have these answers available this evening?
This, of course, this is the one that we entered in in 2005.
Right, but that in and of itself was essentially an extension of the one from 2001, and the services that have been performed have been added on and weren't essentially what were part of the RFP initially. We obviously were not looking to outsource five years ago. And one of the things that I would like to know also is, what is the, in the last 30 days, could we, could somebody here tell me how much the city has run out of billable fees to Carlisle Wortman?
We could do that, yes.
And that amount is how much?
We would have to run the number. I don't have it with me right this moment.
Okay. Mr. Wort, maybe perhaps we could ask Mr. Wortman since it, I'm sorry, I did that.
Mr. Carlisle?
I can go get it.
Okay, I'd appreciate, I appreciate that. I think he does a good job. My concern, I mean, that you do a good job, but if the mayor would concur, if we could have that information, it would be helpful.
I think if a council member requests some information, I think it's appropriate to have it in the decision process. Did you, Mr. Carlisle?
I don't have that information with me at my disposal. It is true, my role has expanded here in the city. But our contract is based on only that which what we are requested to do, and we obviously don't need that work. We certainly respond to what is before us. Many times when we are requested by the city, we are asked to submit a proposal, a cost proposal.
Right.
And we have done that. One of the reasons why this is somewhat important, that it becomes extended, is not because of the work that I'm necessarily doing with the city manager's office, it's the work we're doing with the planning commission right now. We're in the process of, we are on the verge of completing the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. You know, the goal is to have that done by July 1st. We, of course, were hired by the DDA to develop design guidelines for Big Beaver. We're almost complete with that, but all of this work will end if this contract is not extended for at least a period of time. And this, when we realized that the contract was coming due in April, we offered to say, we offered that we would be more than happy to agree to an extension of one year, fully realizing that the city wouldn't in all likelihood go out for an RFQ process at that end of that period of time, which we fully expect that will happen. But it was more or less to be able to allow us to complete the work that we're doing.
And when you came to do that, that's when we cut back on the number of employees in the planning department, correct?
Well, no. I mean, we've been involved for 10 years with the city.
Yes, I know.
But more recently, we've been providing more assistance because it was a conscious decision to downsize the planning department.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
If I may, Your Honor.
Yes. Mr. Zerlik?
When, a little over a year ago, there were five full-time people in the planning department. There are now two, the director and the secretary, and a consultant that comes in, I think, two days a week. So from my perspective, that department's already been privatized, and if we don't extend the contract, I'll be down essentially to a planner, or a director and a secretary for planning function.
Are there other questions? I see Councilwoman McGinnis signaling, and I think I saw Councilwoman Slater signaling before that. Go ahead, Councilwoman McGinnis. Is this a question for Mr. Carlisle, or for Mr. Zerlik?
No, I think this is probably more of a question for Mr. Zerlik.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a little bit of, some of my own thoughts about this issue when I was reviewing it on the agenda for tonight. I do think that, in terms of what you just stated, looking at these things somewhat independently, I see this contract as kind of, although it began as something that was geared more towards planning and zoning, it does say right in the contract, and I went over that as well, that it could include other projects that would require consultation with city staff. And I kind of think that that is obviously the direction that this is going after zoning and planning were addressed. I think at this point, because we're in the midst of this process where we're using the consulting firm to help us analyze the departments and give us some direction as to how we need to go forward in terms of streamlining, it seems that we need to consider this issue separately in terms of finishing that project, not necessarily as continuing this contract so we can substitute them in for planning or zoning. So I think that it is something that needs to be addressed, especially in light of the fact that the contract expires on April 19th. I guess my question would be, obviously, this is a contract that we've renewed, so the date is something that I would imagine was at least on the horizon somewhere, especially since we've been working with your company very closely. So although I do think it is something we have to move on tonight because of the expiration date, I guess my concern would be why it came up at this point and not sometimes sooner. So that would be something, I guess, that I would be looking for as an answer from the city.
Why did it come up before, like in March?
Mr. Zerlik, we're having trouble hearing on this side of the table, so I don't know what's with our sound system over here, but can you be closer?
Perhaps, perhaps we could take a look at how we time file material and have a request a month in advance instead of a week in advance.
I don't think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilwoman McGinnis.
And I don't, I don't think that anyone is really arguing with the process that we're going through and the services that we've been receiving, and the need for it to continue seamlessly so we can make some progress here. We're making progress every day, but to cut that short, I think, would present a whole another list of problems for us. But I think it's just in terms of making sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of timelines so that we can be prepared to make these decisions, you know, with a reasonable amount of time to ask the questions that we need to ask.
Sure. And I'll apologize for the tight timeframe and by my statement, if the clerk can note in the minutes that there's a direction to staff that from now on, any contracts that come up for renewal be done so at least 30 days in advance of the renewal time period.
Councilwoman Slater, did I see you signaling that you had a question or comment?
I didn't hear, but some of it's been answered. I was concerned about the date myself, that if we did not act on that today, we would have an issue with the contract.
Right.
Could I ask, how soon will we be done with the planning issue?
Well, are you referring to the planning projects which Carlisle Wortman's working on? Dick, I think you'd best answer that.
Mr. Carlisle?
Yes.
Is that difficult to answer?
No, no. We anticipate that the projects that we're working on right now, which would include the zoning ordinance, the design guidelines, and I believe we're close to completing the energy strategy, which was, of course, was a grant that, part of a grant-funded program. I believe all of those are going to be complete. We're targeting around July 1st for that. One other thing, though, that I would like to inform council is, we are assisting the planning department with what development review there is. We are assisting the planning commission with reports because of the short staff, and in the planning department, we are also, now, those are all, those are being paid for out of escrow fees. Those don't come out of your general fund. So theoretically, that's ongoing. As long as tight plans and development proposals come in, those are being, most of those are being sent to us for reviews.
And my whole reason, again, is not, I'm not being critical of your firm, I just wanted council to be, at some point, we need to have a discussion on whether we want to move in this same direction with having a consultant do these kinds of things, or if we want to have some other kind of system. That's the only reason why I bring it up.
I thoroughly understand.
Okay, thank you.
You have a lot on your plate, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, Councilman Slater?
I, I'm concerned if we don't act on this tonight, that there's going to be an issue. So I think we need to do that, and when I read the background, it indicates that the planning department is going to be working on RFQ, and they need some time to do that, so.
Would you like to move the resolution?
I'd like to move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater? I mean, Councilwoman Howarlag?
I just, just a couple of comments. One, I want to apologize to Mr. Lambrado and Mr. Miller. I didn't, I'm sorry for snapping at you. My frustration, and this is important, this and other issues, but I don't know if it was under your predecessor, Mr. Zerlik, but sometime within the last few years, the amount of information that we've been receiving in our packets has dwindled substantially. And I think a lot of key issues, this being one, it would be very helpful if we could have additional information. One of the things, perhaps, that I still would like to have on this item is, because it will be coming back in the next four months, is some information regarding the trend of services. My point, I guess, is that when the contract was initially awarded, and most recently in '05, I believe, there was a certain scope that was implied, and that scope has expanded the extent that I think it is in the best interest, as soon as possible, whether that be six months or a year, for the city to send out an RFP or an RFQ. Because Carlisle Wortman may indeed be the best firm for us, but we have that fiduciary responsibility, and we need to essentially go and see what's out there. And there may be other firms, not just in southeast Michigan, but because of the economic trends of our area, there may be firms from outside the state that are interested in establishing a beach, beachhold, so to say, and may be interested in working with Troy. So we must not limit ourselves to only Michigan-based firms. Is one year the amount that we need, or is that simply an arbitrary number? Is six, I mean, effectively, I am curious as to what that timeframe is. Clearly, this contract expires in two weeks, and we essentially, at this point, must extend it some amount of time.
The requested extension for one year was not arbitrary. On most contracts, with the exception of contracts where there's a cultural change in the organization, such as building inspection services or golf course services that may be coming up. Anything else that pertains to a consultant-client relationship, I'd like to go for one year. That'll also be in line with any labor contracts we negotiate. They should all be one year, because that way, we can take a look at the economics of our region in real time and decide what we need to do for the following year. So I think when times were better, it behooved us to have long-term contracts with labor groups and with consultants. Now, in uncertain times, it's better, from the city's perspective, to have one-year contracts. So that's the reason for a one-year contract. We'll be happy to trend out our costs. I know I did the report a while back, when we went from five employees to two employees in the planning department, as well as utilizing consultants two days a week. The savings was over $100,000, if I recall. But I'll be happy to have Mark Miller and Brent Savida on track on all costs, and we'll develop an RMP probably seven, eight months from then.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that there is a provision in this contract extension that does allow for cancellation with 30 days written notice as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I think this whole discussion has been helpful to all of us. Any further comments before we hit the vote?
One last comment.
Councilwoman Howarlag?
The, just a couple of general thoughts about what's been, essentially, what's become of Mr. Carlisle's contract with, for his, with the city and for this firm. I'm not entirely certain that Carlisle Wortman, for example, is the best firm to be using for all of the services that we're looking for cost analysis, because there are indeed specialists in certain areas, and the cost may be the same, maybe less. You're going to get a product that is a result of expertise in an industry, for example, golf courses. There are a number of different golf course, firms that do golf course analysis for operations, efficiencies, and whether or not they can be done in-house or outsourced. And they actually specialize in that, and the question is, you know, do we want to use Carlisle Wortman for that, or do we want to... use Carlyle Wortman for that, or do we want to use another firm for it? I actually, I don't think that we have the information, I don't believe, that there's enough information to say, let's go and extend this for a year. And, you know, anything that the city does that we don't have anybody to help us with, his firm's going to get, because essentially, the contract is written that broadly, and that's what this has become. I have no issue with the whole, the core of this, the issue of extending it for a year, working with the planning department and dealing with planning issues, specifically that. The other issues that have essentially been kind of added on to the original contract, that's where I have great discomfort with. And unfortunately, they're kind of all in one right now, and I would prefer that they were separated. But as it is, I'm afraid I can't vote for this resolution.
I can make one comment if I may.
Yes, Mr. Hurley?
The city is utilizing Plant Moran for possibility of joint dispatch and jail services with the cities of Troy, Royal Oak, and Madison Heights. Excuse me. The police department is utilizing, is working with Plant Moran for joint dispatch and jail services for consolidation efforts with Troy, Madison Heights, and Royal Oak.
Further discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramani?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
No.
Motion passes. Next, we have H8, which is a cancellation of the Troy Days Festival, and we have a report in the packet. At the last meeting when this came up, the council requested to go to the Troy Days Committee, and they make a recommendation, and they did. And so thus, we have the resolution before us this evening. Would you like, Councilwoman Kirwin?
Whereas the Troy Days Festival has been a community fair for the past forty-one years through participation in kind services and financial subsidy of the city of Troy. Whereas although coordinated by volunteers, the festival requires considerable resources by the following city departments: community affairs, department of public works, parks and recreation, risk management, purchasing, finance, treasury, fire, and police. Whereas revenues generated from the Troy Days festivals have regularly experienced shortfalls and do not cover festival expenses, which have been supplemented by the city of Troy. Whereas the 2010 proposed festival is anticipated to run, as in years past, with a significant cash shortage to supplement festival expenses, including city staffing and expenses. Whereas the city of Troy is experiencing a declining revenue stream resulting in a reduction of city staff and resources. And whereas all remaining city staff resources are being dedicated to core services and public safety, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby recognizes the declining economic condition resulting in unforeseen reduction of city staff and resources, and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby recognizes the Troy Days Festival places in undue hardship, both financial and staffing, on an already strained city government, and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby deems it to be in the best interest of the Troy city residents to cancel the Troy Days Festival indefinitely.
And just one more second.
And be it finally resolved that Troy City Council will revisit the possibility of reinstating the Troy Days Festival in the future.
Do we have a second of the resolution?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramani, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Fleming?
There was some discussion earlier tonight, and the speaker referred to a Troy Days article that was in the newspaper a year ago. Could we get some clarification on that because it's a little misleading in that it was a one thousand dollar, one hundred thousand dollar revenue generator? Could staff speak to that?
Yes, sir, we'd be happy to. In fact, Cindy Stewart, if she's in the audience, could come up and talk about the subsidy that was provided in-house every year to the Troy Days Festival. And then I also invited the two chairs of the Troy Day Committee, Mr. Bob Burke and Mr. Mike Gonda, and asked them to speak for a couple of minutes to accentuate what was contained in your minutes. And they have agreed to do so, and they're in the audience. So if I may, after Cindy answers your question on the funding, if Bob and Mike come up and talk about what transpired at the committee meeting, and I beg your indulgence in that respect as well.
I thought they were here to answer questions from us.
I invited them here, your honor.
Other than, okay, all right.
It's up to you, but I invited them here to speak on what transpired.
We'll see if the council needs it. Yes.
The article a year ago, the reporter asked what our revenue was, and at that time, right after the festival, we knew based on the carnival revenue and the parking, it was around a hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand nine, our revenue was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, because that includes sponsorship and booth money, and our expenses were a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That doesn't include the approximately a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from twelve city departments, the largest, which is police. And in two thousand eight, just to give you a comparison, our revenue, because we had the huge rainstorm, our revenue was seventy-five thousand, and our expenses were a hundred and thirty-five thousand, not counting the hundred, hundred and fifteen thousand of staff.
Right. Mayor? Any answer, Councilwoman Howarak? Is this a question for Mrs. Stewart?
It is, yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Stewart?
Just so we're all clear, the expenses that you're referring to are what?
The expenses of the hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Right.
That would be the fireworks, it would be tents, it would be generators, it would be entertainment, I mean, everything that we-
Everything besides labor?
Right.
Is there any labor built into those costs?
There is some of the parks department and public works in there. There's approximately a thousand hours from about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But the police costs, which is over fifty thousand, all the other departments, that's not in there.
Further questions? Council, do you wish to hear from the, from Mr. Gonda and Mr. Burke?
Please.
Okay, would you gentlemen come up, please, to the microphone? We did, we did read the minutes and the report and, of course, the resolution, but council wished some more information.
Okay.
Okay. You want to move the mic up there? There we go, okay.
But I hope you were able to read. Was that John came to the meeting, and we discussed three options for how to move forward with the festival. First, moving forward in a reduced mode, could we cut back on various items within the festival? Which items would we cut back? The second would be, can we somewhat privatize the festival, keeping it in place, but having it run by outside somebody else, taking over the cost of issues with purchasing, treasury, policing, et cetera? And the third effort was, could we privatize it elsewhere than Troy? In essence, making it a non-Troy event. The outcome of that discussion was a motion, basically, that said, no, we don't think we can do that and do it effectively. We've stated earlier that issues around, I think in two thousand five, we spent significant time working with the city to resolve some specific issues around the operation of the festival, shorten the time of the festival, improve the policing of the festival, created a set of operational rules for the festival, and rules for people attending the festival. And those are items that we felt would be very difficult to take and just to privatize, and then be able to ensure that they would be followed. The other issue became funding. If you're going to privatize, how are you going to fund it? Where does the money come from for the festival? The vast majority of the money that the festival generates comes from the ride vendor. That, as you can see, is not enough to cover all of the various items. How would you then cover the shortfall? What else could you do? What revenue generators would you have? First one that most outside businesses would look at and that you can see in the other communities, such as Dearborn, would be to raise money by running a liquor event at the festival. You don't want to do that. So for a number of reasons, the committee put a motion forward, in fact, Mike made the motion, that we not continue the festival this year, that we cancel it and continue that issue, maybe look forward to running it in the future, but at this time, not to run the festival and also not to run it privately.
Okay. Mr. Gonda? The mic, you have to come to the side.
But the resources we get from the city, regardless of all the volunteers, you need all those trucks, you need the manpower, the dedicated service of Parks and Rec, community affairs, we had engineering, treasury, I think, finance helping us. It's just virtually impossible to put that giant festival on with a hundred thousand people on our own without your help. We've appreciated all that has been given to us in the last five or ten years since we redesigned this thing four or five years ago. It was the city council's recommendation. We're kind of going off the beaten path here. We got everybody together. It was a process redesign, worked extremely well, cut the hours down, it's been safe, cost-effective in the sense that you have your own people here helping us. You know, it's outside of their eight-hour day, they were there fourteen hours a day helping us for the two weeks, setting it up and tearing it down. We appreciate that. We know we can't go on and do that all by ourselves. So we understand the setback that the city has with the, you know, even though you might have bucket trucks and dump trucks and pickup trucks, but you don't have the manpower to utilize it for those two weeks, it'd be impossible for us to do it on our own. We can't, there's no way possible, anybody on the outside, there's nobody that we know in the private industry that could walk in here and do that and break even in the sense that we would basically lose money if we didn't have the resources of the city to get it done. I don't think anybody possibly could do it on the outside. Thanks for your help, and whenever you want it again, we're here.
And I noticed it was in the report, so you do know, that we'd be down fifty-five employees from this year in July. So it's actual manpower, time allotment, the staff will simply not have the time, and we just will not have the people resources or the money resources to do it.
We understand.
Yes, and that's what you're saying, that's what the committee's saying, that you understand.
The bottom line is, if you look at the total dollar amount, you're talking a number of headcount potentially.
Right.
But when you look at the festival itself, the vast majority of our usage of your manpower is for about a two-week period.
Right.
So it's very intense for that two weeks, and at fifty-five people down, that's going to be a problem.
Yes. And we do need to be putting forth our efforts for core services, place, fire, PPW, the roads, you know, those kinds of things have to be our first priority, so, thank you. I don't know, other council members may have questions. Was it Councilwoman Beltramani first, and then Council, Mayor Potem Fleming?
You guys attend and have a network with other community festival kinds of people. Are we unique in this?
I don't believe that we're unique. I can't give you any detail at this time. I don't think you're completely unique. We probably are one of the few, though, that is run by the city.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Yes. I certainly appreciate you taking the time with your committee and revisiting this. I think this would have been a decision made by the council last meeting, but personally, I felt that we owed you an opportunity to go back and take a look, to see what you could do to downsize. There's a lot of misinformation out there, or some misleading information, what the cost of the festival was and so forth and expenses. Hopefully, we cleared some of that up tonight. It's still not an exorbitant number, you know, that you're running negative, but it's a manpower issue. But I was hopeful and optimistic that you'd be able to come up with something that would downsize the festival and still have it, because I know many people are very passionate about this, as am I. I hate to see us not do this. But you said you've given it your best shot, taken time with city management. I received a call from our city manager while I was actually traveling out of state and was giving me a summary of what had transpired and your input from that meeting. And even before he finished, I think, I cut him short and said, okay, I think I've heard enough. This committee says it can't be done, it can't be privatized. I respect that. I don't want to close the door on this forever, though. I think we need to continue to look for ways, maybe the window is short now for this year, but I'd like to continue to look for ways to revisit this issue. I'd like you to keep your committee active and continue to look and see if we can resurrect this in some way. I know there was another party that was contacted, I didn't see that letter until after I returned from out of state, who indicated they felt that could be done. I know you disagree with that, and I don't know if anyone else wants to discuss that tonight or not, but there are people that believe it can be done, your committee believes it can't be done. And so based upon what you had advised our city management in discussions with the police department, I basically said, I've heard enough at that point, and agreed that we shouldn't try to force the issue this year. But I really appreciate all the hard work you guys have done, your committee's done a great job, and I just hate to see this go down. We had to cancel it in two thousand one, we had to cancel it, you know, a couple of years ago because of the weather, and we resurrected it, come back. I'd like to see us do it again. But I don't want to lose this. This is something great in Troy, we want to keep.
We've had some level of feedback, and I was interviewed by a high school student who had an assignment to ask some questions around the cancellation of Troy Days. The basic feedback that I'm getting is you have to set the tone for the city, and the tone right now is that we're in trouble, we've got some issues, and if we have to sacrifice Troy Days for that for a while anyway, this is it. Can't argue with it.
Okay, Councilwoman Kirwin, you had a question or a comment?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you both for coming tonight. Really appreciate hearing from you. And yes, we have heard from students who will certainly miss this, as we will. It's a great family event. But as the resolution makes clear, it doesn't end it forever.
Right.
The last whereas makes that perfectly clear, and we're so grateful for your leadership through this, for your insight. I know something that did play into this, two important factors that I don't know we've talked about, is corporate sponsorship. Corporate sponsorship is down everywhere and in the festival as well. And the other thing that we certainly understand now is discretionary income has changed, that families who in the past made this as part of it have cut back a lot on their discretionary income. And we have heard from our Rochester Road pro-car wash guy, that some of that discretionary fund can actually be used right now on Rochester Road, and I'd certainly encourage that as well, family night out, or breakfast or lunch at Ridley's or something like that. So during this time of a changing economic picture, we will be substituting other different ways for families to do things together. Certainly will appreciate your leadership in this and your sense of volunteerism and look for you in other ways. And I just have to say to you, Mike, remember all those years and years ago with the band and Steve, and you're running along behind the band, and for so long now, you've been leading that band as you helped to co-chair this with Bob Burke, so appreciate that all those years. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, is you have questions for?
I do.
You do? Yes. I'm sorry. I didn't know we had another question. Sorry, Councilman Howarak?
I guess I'm the fellow who always has eternal hope, and so I'm curious as to what you foresee the committee doing in the interim, if you will.
Well, we used to meet like every other month.
Right.
And there, you know, maybe nine or ten times a year, and then we cut it in half because we had a great team, everybody knew what to do. And we can still get together once or twice a year, we can hash this around, drink some coffee, and think of better plans. But again, until you have the resources of the people in this city and the employees of this city and the equipment, we just virtually cannot see how this could move forward in any step without your help.
Well, I guess my curiosity stems from, you know, if this is something that you would foresee happening, perhaps from the revenues and expenses, you can either match better for a better economy a year or two from now, or perhaps downsizing to the extent that it really does become kind of a community fair, very much smaller than it has been in order to kind of keep it going. And so there is a, or, and then the other option is, because there is another group of people that are interested in seeing this continue at some form, perhaps assisting them- we're assisting them in some sort of a, a transition of information and then officially disbanding your committee.
We've seen over the last couple of years, kind of a significant shift in how the festival income has come in. We've seen a change in the kinds of booths that we have, gone from a lot of PTOs, PTAs to very commercial oriented booths. We've also seen a significant change in attendance and the number of kids that are dropped off, in essence without even parking, parents who just drop them off anywhere unfortunately. And we've worked hard on, on trying to make that a safe environment. But what that does is it changes the financial base of the festival and how the, how the festival operates where you can get funding. I think the best we could do is go back and look at how we might restructure to get it back into a community type event. But the issue again is, can we get PTOs, PTAs to come back? Those are the, those were the root of how this thing started, very community oriented. Can we get those people back with us? Can we get the churches back? We've seen a dropout of churches also, unfortunately. So, those are the kinds of things we need to get back to the festival to be able to run it as a community event. But again, the park itself needs to be maintained, have to pick up the trash, have to groom it after we have the festival. Those are all costs that if we can't fund it through the rides, through parking, through our charges for booths, it's not going to happen.
So, on a, on a practical level, do you see their, your committee meeting or you think, or would you advocate for its disbanding?
No, I think we, we've talked about, as Mike has indicated, meeting at a rather less rigorous schedule and see what we can do to move forward.
Okay.
This, this current economy is not going to stick with us forever.
We should hope not.
In fact, it's improving to others at this point in time. What we're seeing, in my view, is we're seeing government with this lag unfortunately in the way taxes are collected, et cetera. Other areas of the economy are improving, this area is not, is going to have some trouble for the next couple of years. I suspect in a couple of years, things will be better and we'll be able to talk much more to the point of getting it back.
Further questions?
Thank you for your answers.
Okay. The vote, Mrs. Brethama?
Councilman McGinnis?
Support, yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shurling?
Yes.
Councilman Belltmaney?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
No.
Horlak?
Yes.
Motion passes, Councilman Horlak?
And, and two points I didn't get a chance to, to mention before the vote. One is the, the issue of the meeting with Tom Koschewski and the email that you received last week is unresolved. And then secondly, well, I guess we'll take it one at a time. We did receive an email from Tom Koschewski, who's, used to be involved with the Troy Days Committee, and he had mentioned that he met, I believe, I don't have the email in front of me, so I have to go off my recollection of the email. He mentioned that I believe he met with you, Mr. Zerlag, is that correct?
He met with Chief Mayor and Captain Shurling.
Okay, he, he just met on the police side, is what you're saying?
I did speak with him on the telephone, and then there was a follow-up meeting with police management and.
And is, I guess what I'm getting at is, what, do you, do you foresee, I mean, what was the point of that, or is that just something that's going to happen in a void or is there going to be some follow-up? Is council gonna, I mean, what's going on?
The point in my calling Mr. Koschewski was that at the last council meeting, I was asked if I would contact the four or five members that essentially made an exodus from the existing Troy Days Committee. After speaking with Mr. Koschewski, I asked Chief Mayor and Captain Shurling if they would then follow up on the matter, and then spoke to the Troy Days Committee as well, and wanted to honor the wishes of the Troy Days Committee, who not only agreed with management to not have the Troy Day event, but took it one step further and in their resolution indicated they did not want to see it privatized by any particular entity. And so with that, I asked Chief Mayor and Chief Shurling essentially to cancel the discussions with Mr. Koschewski. If we were to have a privatization event, I didn't realize that Tom was no longer a resident, and so to give the event to a non-resident, in my mind, it would be the same, or it should be the same as just going out and bid the event to the private sector.
Okay.
Well, if the, if.
Excuse, excuse me just a moment. We've already had our, our vote on this issue. Council wish to continue discussing the item further?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Horlak?
Well, you know, I think that, you know, in, in, you know, we could have done this before the vote, but since you had called it, I didn't want to interrupt you. Perhaps I should interrupt you in the future?
No, it was that I thought we were through with our discussion, that was it.
I mean, just a semantical point, I'm, I'm almost finished anyway, but I do think that, you know, we had this conversation as a council, this is something that had happened administratively. We as a council received an email, and the email that we did receive, it seemed to me that there was perhaps some miscommunication. I think this is an important issue because all of these policy things are happening, and the more they happen, the more I feel that, that this whole organization is not communicating with itself, and that things are happening, there are things just dropped in on us, and that people aren't communicating. He apparently, but Mr. Koschewski was under the impression that something was happening, suddenly it gets thrown into his lap that if there's going to be an organization that is going to hold Troy Days, that they must pay the city rent for use of the park, which to me is extremely bizarre. Now, our interest is in restoring the park to its current state, but to, to charge them for performing a community service, to me, I think, is not what we want to do. And I remember, you know, when, when the Boys and Girl, or not the Boys and Girls Club, the Rotary Club wanted to develop a park along Lake Road, we did everything that we could in order to prevent them from doing so by creating so many onerous burdens. And if, if we're, have any interest as a city to continue without increased tax rates, then it behooves us to pitch in and work together in a, in a volunteer spirit, but if we prevent that from happening, that's quite depressing, quite frankly, and, and I don't understand it. I just don't understand it. So, if somebody going to respond to Mr. Koschewski's email, I can forward it to you, I think you received it.
You know, it may be that perhaps Chief Mayor, who actually had a, a real-time conversation with Mr. Koschewski could, or Mr. Shurling, could supplement what I had mentioned earlier.
Chief Mayor, Captain Shurling?
Yes, ma'am. I had a little difficulty with the speaker system, this is your leg, so I could hear, you called me up here, but I didn't hear what I was supposed to say, sir.
Okay.
I can hear a little better now, couldn't hear you back then.
All right. What I had, with the council's indulgence, I was asked why there was an initial contact with Mr. Koschewski, and then essentially it was stopped. And the reason that I gave was that essentially we had a recommendation by city management to not have Troy Days. We knew that because it was a green, I'm going to give more of an answer, just to give you the background. Because we had this as a green item on March 8th, I had recommended that we also get input from the Troy Days Committee, and had such, met with Cindy Stewart and other staff members with the Troy Days Committee. In the midst of that, I asked you to contact Mr. Koschewski to see if, if he had an interest in conducting Troy Days essentially with no cost to the city. When I went to the Troy Days Committee, the committee unanimously voted not only to not have Troy Days, but to not have staff pursue having the brand name of Troy Days, go outside of a Troy community event per se. And so then I asked that you stop the conversations with Mr. Koschewski, essentially to honor the request of the Troy Days Committee, and was asked again why, you know, we stopped, and since you had spoken with Tom last, I thought perhaps you could explain what transpired in relation to his email.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Essentially, as Mr. Zerlag stated, Captain Shurling and myself were asked to speak to Mr. Koszubski. They, Mr. Koszubski and his wife Cheryl DeWitt Koszubski are the main two people we dealt with in the past when we dealt with Troy Days. Captain Shurling and myself, over the years, have spent a lot of time dealing with the Troy Days matter based upon our positions back from when I was a captain and he was a lieutenant, when I became chief, and he was a captain. Spent a lot of time over Troy Days. We've had good working relationships with the past and the current Troy Days Committees and members, and we've been over backwards, make sure we have good communication with that. When we met with Mr. Koszubski, we expressed what was going on. He was aware of, pretty much aware of where the factors were and what was happening. We started discussing with him from the standpoint of being a, another entity that could come in and privatize Troy Days and look at what was going on with Troy Days, and then make it an event that wouldn't cost the city any money. We wanted to make sure that he understood the length and breadth of what we were asking him, so we laid down that there could be a significant expense that would go on with anybody who was doing that event. And in the effort of doing that, I stated everything as matter of fact as I could be that I anticipated there could be cost. It isn't my place to say that someone could have the park for nothing. I said there could be a cost involved with the park. He discussed whether he would have to pay for the front half of the park, the back half of the park, and we started getting into a lot of details to where it, myself and Captain Shurling felt we were exceeding what our initial effort was, was to go there just to scout this out, and that we were in essence moving into getting someone to bid on doing a Troy Days event. We talked with him for quite a bit. His letter, the top portion of the letter where it detailed the questions and the statements that we made, I wouldn't argue any factual basis, he was very factual with that, those are conversation points we had. When we left that meeting, it became very obvious through conversation with Captain Shurling and myself, we both shared the same feelings. I called Mr. Zerlag and said that I really felt that since this wasn't a community group as we initially thought it was, this would be essentially a nonprofit foundation that's from with outside, from outside the city of Troy, that we should consider just bidding this out as a private enterprise. Perhaps someone could just have it in a parking lot of the, the Kmart building or another commercial enterprise. It was no longer a community fair, just bid it out. So, in discussion with that, Mr. Zerlag, and Captain Shurling and myself had further discussion. We called back, Captain Shurling called Mr. Koszubski back and told him this was exceeding what we originally intended, and with all fairness, that's where we generated the documents that we did. I'm trying to give an overview, is that a little too much?
Thank you. Councilman Horlak, does that cover your questions?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your taking the time to meet with him and, and the other issues that I have on hand, I'll probably contact you and Mr. Zerlag. I think that the, the meeting, I think, I think this is fine. I appreciate your clarifying that.
Sure.
Thank you. If we're through with this item, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll return to the rest of the agenda. This is our usual time, we take a break. Our next item of business is H9, the Standard Purchasing Resolution 8, the Best Value Award, Building Department Services. I guess that I need to go over the fact that we should have a resolution on the floor before we have the discussion. Then when we have the vote, the discussion is to cease, that's the way our rules usually proceed. And I know I broke the rule when I discussed the item about whether to table an item or whether to do it. We didn't have a resolution on the table, but I would hope that council would stay to that format. It does help us along. So, if we can have a resolution on the floor and then we can discuss it. So, I want to move the resolution. Councilwoman McGinnis?
May I move the resolution as printed for purposes of discussion?
Sir.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and seconded by Councilwoman Fleming that we have the resolution before us for purpose of discussion. This is a difficult item for us because one of the things that we're doing at, looking at, providing the best service that we can at a, the most efficient cost that we can. However, as I expressed before at one of our study sessions, we've had, and the three gentlemen this evening that spoke from the Builders Association have indicated we have an outstanding building department. The problem, as I see it, with our dilemma tonight is that we have a firm that's been recommended that is willing to charge us only for services provided, in other words, if we have things, people building and they have to do work on it, then they're going to charge us, otherwise they aren't. And so, they're able to give us a very low cost which our building department can't compete with. Mr. Zerlag, if you'd like to make a comment?
I'd like to make a few comments if I may, and then if I miss something, I'd like to be supplemented by, by staff, either John, or Mark, or Susan Leirstein, or Peggy Sears, or Dick Carlisle. And I appreciate all of the comments. Can you hear me okay? Can I, am I heard okay?
Acoustics tonight are really off.
Normally, that's not a problem for me, but can you hear me okay? I appreciate all of the comments that were made about the professional building department that we have and the excellent employees. I am well aware of that. And in fact, I promoted Mark Steimak a number of years ago to the position that he now holds, and Mark has done a stellar job. It's not about the performance level of the building department, it's about the city of Troy, along with just about every other city, being economically unsustainable if we continue to operate the way that we do. The model for local government is broken and needs to be fixed, and we have to analyze every department for the most cost-efficient manner to deliver services. We took a look at the building department as one of our first departments and essentially developed a two-pronged approach. And I have put this in a letter earlier to you and will state it briefly primarily for the sake of, of the audience. But the first prong is to have Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director, essentially be in charge of specification development, working with the department head, and heading a team of herself and Dick Carlisle, again from the private sector, and I wanted to have one other person from the outside. In case, in the case of the building department, Dick Carlisle did not, pardon my voice, did not participate in the selection process because there was frankly a complaint against Mr. Carlisle that he had a financial arrangement with the company SafeBilt and would therefore benefit financially if the city were to select SafeBilt. Prior to the complaint received, we had a letter on file from Mr. Carlisle to Susan Leirstein indicating that he has no financial interest or will not receive any financial benefit if SafeBilt was selected. Regardless of that, we thought it would be in the best interest if Dick acted as an observer as opposed to an interviewer for the people that submitted bids, and in Dick's place, I hired Gary Shripka to come in and act as the team. So, the team consisted essentially of Susan Leirstein, Gary Shripka, and Tom Marcus, whom I also asked to join, to join the bid team to make their recommendation. Once that recommendation came in, the next process is to turn it over essentially to Peggy Sears, our HR director, and she works as the department head to see if the bid could be met or beat by the employees. We try to be employee-centric, but our number one obligation is the economic viability of the city of Troy as an organization. What happened in SafeBilt's case is that, as Mayor Shilling indicated, their fees are predicated solely on revenues that come in for building permits, and it's 80% of the building permit fees on the first million dollars, with the city getting 20%, and anything over a million dollars, the number jumps down to a 75%, 25% ratio where SafeBilt would get 75%, the city would get 25%. To give an extreme example, prove a point, if there was hardly any revenues at all from the building trades in the city of Troy, we would pay 80% of whatever came in on a permit charge for a very down timeframe and still have someone from SafeBilt work the counter for us. Our employees essentially can't compete with a situation like that because even with the reduction in pay, we have no idea if there's going to be a severe reduction in revenues coming in for building permits. I was asked a question today what the subsidy was for the past five years. It's contained in the, in the handout, and it's been substantial. Again, we have to take a look at what the cost is to the general fund for this on-demand service, and absolutely, we have the best building department, I think, anywhere around. I have experience in four cities. This building department beats the other three cities hands down. I have someone here from SafeBilt, Mr. David Thompson, and he can address any questions that you may have as well. Also wish to indicate that I did ask Mr. Thompson if council does decide to, number one, have us proceed with negotiations, and then number two, this would come back to the council for a contract award. If that were to be the case, would I see a bus with a Colorado license plate on there with a lot of employees coming out of the parking lot? And he said absolutely not. It behooves SafeBilt to hire locally, and I pressed to be more specific and defined locally as City of Troy. And so, Mr. Thompson can speak to what he would do in terms of interviewing our City of Troy employees, and I have told all of our employees in the building department that they would get an excellent reference because they've all done an excellent job. Anyone, any staff member can fill in anything that you'd like, if I may have missed something.
Mayor Dan Fleming?
Just one point as well, Mr. Zerlag. This is based upon the permit fees not increasing at all, that was in our background, and I don't think you stated that, but this 80% that they're getting is, we're not going to increase the fees to the builders, you know, to kind of stay the same.
That's exactly, that's exactly correct. The worst thing that could happen is you go to the private sector and, and the private sector doubles the fee structure. The way it works, if our fees are $500,000 next fiscal year, that, that would mean SafeBilt would receive $400,000 and the city general fund would receive $100,000.
And just for the benefit of the people that are listening, you may not have read all the detail, what's the projected savings annually?
I'm going to have either Susan, or Mark, or John respond to that question.
I can answer that.
Where the way based upon, the proposal submitted by the building department, $424,507.
Further questions, Councilwoman Herman?
Well, just, we did have some citizen comment regarding this earlier, and so I, I would just like to simply restate some of the things that they brought up. How can we guarantee that our inspections remain of high quality?
There will be monitoring of the contract by the Assistant City Manager of Services, Mark Miller, and I think that, that question could also be answered by SafeBilt. If I, if you'd like, I could bring him up.
All right, and then just a second one, and then, and then that would be great. The second one, Mr. Zerlag, would be the opportunity of our employees to, would you like to respond to that too?
Yes, I would like all of our employees that wish to be interviewed, to be interviewed by SafeBilt, and Mr. Thompson can respond to that as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson? Thomas or Thompson?
Thompson.
Thompson.
T-H-O-M-S-E-N.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here.
Yes, thank you for being here.
So, to the first question, which is, you know, the issue of quality and also issues of service level. Now, when it comes to service level issues such as inspection turnaround time, plan review turnaround time, customer service, client satisfaction, those kind of things can, will be built in to the contract directly so that we will, our performance in, in meeting the city's needs will be based on the terms of the contract. So, some of that can be worked in directly. To issues of quality, in addition to the, you know, the monitoring that will occur at the city staff level, our own staff will perform audits of the work being done in the field. We, we take, our first and primary function is life safety, and we take that incredibly seriously, not to the detriment of the, you know, the construction community, but it is very important that the work we do be compliant and be of the highest quality while still delivering high service level. To the second question with regard to city staff, as I mentioned to, to the team earlier this week, it, it is absolutely in our best interest to hire existing city employees wherever possible. They have that institutional knowledge, you know, they, I mean, just, you know, the simple issue of being able to find, you know, their way from one place to another is much easier with somebody who's been here, been doing the job. So, our preference is absolutely to do that. And we've opened up our HR department to them directly. We've already had communication from a number of them, and they will get first priority during the interview process as we go through this. And I, and I also want to second everything that's been said about your existing department. My interactions with Mr. Steimak, I mean, he's been incredibly professional. It's obvious that he's got tremendous respect from the community, you know, from other members of the team, so, you know, it certainly understands what a difficult situation this is.
And it's not only within the community, but it's actually within Michigan. The reputation of the, of the building department has been outstanding, but your offer of the cost savings to us, since we're looking at cost savings, is something that we need to seriously look at. So, I'm hopeful that at least some of the city employees will, in the building department, will decide that they want to look at whether they want to, to work for you. And I think there might be some other questions too from other members, but let's see if someone else, anyone else have a question? Since you had one before, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a question, and I don't know who would be best suited to answer it, and it's kind of a broad question, but I think it's one that we need to look at in terms of, to a citizen or a developer that's coming in, assuming to the city of Troy building, what, what is this going to look like? I mean, in terms of having actual staff there, I think that the concerns that we've heard from citizens and, and other people that do business with the city of Troy is that there is this fear of the unknown. We'd be going from something that's absolutely reliable and professional to something that we're not familiar with.
Absolutely.
And I think it's very important- And I think it's very important that, although the goal would be to have a seamless transition and to see familiar faces that people trust and have dealt with for many years, what's the reality? Are we going to see these people in the building? Are we going to, you know, have that kind of turnover? Or is it too soon to get that kind of concrete information?
I'll start the answer, and Mr. Thompson can finish it. To the excellent builders like Mr. McCleish and Mr. Pratt, they may, they'll know a difference because they're here and know what's going on. Someone else that's not too familiar with the City of Troy would come to the building department and probably not know that it was a private sector employee that they were dealing with. Do you want to augment that?
Yeah, I would just say, with regard to the existing staff, it is probably too early for me to be able to make any kind of commitments to you to say, you know, this percentage or this number of the existing staff will still be here. You know, we, of course, have got our internal procedures with regard to hiring, background checks, value-based questioning, et cetera, et cetera. So, we need to be able to go through that process with the existing employees and, you know, determine whether or not, you know, they're a cultural fit with us as well as they are with you. So, there needs to be that kind of crossover. Again, my hope is the staff would remain relatively consistent from now to then, but it's tough for me to make an absolute commitment to you on that front. With regard to the way the department looks and the way the department feels, we try to make our departments an extension of the city staff. We want to make it as integrated as possible. We want to be as indistinguishable from city staff as possible. You know, we'd like to have City of Troy identification on our vehicles. We'd like to carry City of Troy identification badges, City of Troy business cards, so that from the public's point of view, it's all integrated. The services that are provided at the counter currently will continue to be provided. The staff that you have on site, those same functions will remain here on site. So, from city staff's perspective and from the applicant's perspective, it should fairly well be business as usual.
Okay. Councilwoman Slater, did I see your signaling that you had a question or not?
Yes. It's a very difficult decision for me personally. I know you can't give me some assurances on retaining employees. Are your wages competitive with the area or with what they were making here with the city?
With your staff in particular, I haven't seen the wages, so I can't speak directly to them. So, what I can, what I can do is tell you in general terms. In terms of base pay, we're usually very competitive right out to a little bit higher than a standard scale in any of our areas around the country. We're always very competitive. In years past, our benefits package tended to not be as strong as the municipal package that employees have, although that gap, as you can imagine, is closed very substantially over the past two or three years to the point where I think even our benefits package is, is pretty competitive. I wouldn't say it's as good as, you know, it still exists with a lot of municipal clients, but it is competitive.
Are they going to want to come work for your company?
I believe they will. We, we are around the country incredibly well-respected, fairly well-known, much-appreciated member of the code development community. We have, there's an ICC certification called Master Code Professional. At one time, I think there were seven hundred of them, or three hundred of them around the country. We have seven of those in our company. We take the codes very seriously. We take training of our people very seriously. We take, giving them the right tools to do the job very seriously. We've got a good culture. We've got, you know, a strong company with strong values, and we believe they'll want to be a part of it.
Okay. Councilwoman Belltoomey?
Mr. Thompson, I'm glad that you're here tonight. This is a difficult decision for all of us because it is essentially us laying off longtime employees with no guarantee that they will be rehired. And we understand that you can't give that guarantee particularly. However, I guess, going back to Councilwoman McGinnis's question on what this might look like, you are a national company. I mean, this piece is a Michigan piece, but you're a national company, and you're well-known, and you do this for a living.
Right.
And successfully, as I understand. In a community like Troy, a suburb, thirty-four and a half square miles, this kind of building here, this kind of redevelopment opportunity, what is the staffing level that you expect?
It is, that's, that's a hard, it's a moving target for one. It's hard to nail down, which is part of the, which is part of the challenge that your building department frankly has faced over the last few years. Based on existing activity levels, I would imagine that we're going to end up somewhere between five and seven people on the team. It'll take some analysis during the transition process, looking at the data, looking at existing activity, to really nail that down and finalize it. One of our clients is a municipality, one hundred and ten thousand people, very similar suburb of a large metropolitan area, tremendous commercial development, lots of redevelopment going on, lots of infill projects. Their activity this past year compared to the City of Troy was about, a little better than two times the activity level. And we had essentially ten full-time employees at the municipal location, and that had to be supplemented with other, from other offices from time to time. So, we had, you know, probably would equate it to about eleven, eleven and a half FTEs over the course of the year.
I knew that even if you hadn't carefully analyzed our figures, you had a ballpark, and I was concerned about that. And you will be using your own vehicles?
Correct.
Not City of Troy vehicles? So, they'll be much like the Alliance First Responder vehicles that say City of Troy on the side?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor McFlemy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate introducing any new technology that might streamline the process and so forth? You're a national company. I know we do a great job, but from what you've seen already, do you anticipate some new technology that might streamline?
Yeah, I do believe that there is some opportunity for that, especially streamlining the field device, the use of field devices for resulting inspections referencing codes. That'll be part of that initial evaluation that we go through. In talking with, you know, the folks that provide the BSNA software, it sounds like that capability is built in, although there was some discussion about what, which different handheld devices or field devices they're compatible with. But that would be one opportunity. And that's, again, all part of the initial evaluation that we do as we, as we come in.
Further questions? Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin? Yes.
I think we were all quite surprised with the numbers. And I wanted to have you address just one specific thing, and that was the timeframe to complete various tasks because it sometimes is half. Could you, how do you do it so rapidly? I guess is what I'd like to know.
Is that in comparison to another company? Not in comparison to our?
Oh, compared to another company? I, I.
Can you respond to this question then?
I can't speak to how they, how they do it. We've been in business of doing this and only this since 1992. We've been, we've been doing it an awful long time. We provide nothing but building department services. We operate in nine states. We have one hundred and twenty-plus municipal clients across the country, and we've got really, really exceptional people working for us. And over the years, what all of that has culminated into our pretty standard refined processes that we've developed in terms of how we deliver service. So, you know, it starts from the beginning of the process, carries all the way through the process. It's just a, it's a methodology and a system and an approach and tools and, you know, all of the accessories that go with that that create the system. So, it's a little hard to, it's a little hard to put into, you know, words exactly how we do it faster, but that's, did that answer the question for you?
Well, the accuracy that's on here, the first review, the revisions, you have five days for residential first review, a three-day for revisions, are you stating that nationally these are the, these are the time?
Nationally, that's what we provide.
Okay. It's just not different for this?
Correct.
Bid? Okay, thank you.
And, and one of the, one of the ways on, you know, certain projects that, you know, we can do that better than others is that we've got a depth of resources across the country. You know, we have two or three employees in Colorado that used to work in this immediate area. You know, within the last three years, they've come to Colorado. So, throughout the company, we've got resources, expertise, so that we can take, you know, for instance, a large redevelopment project, and we can break it up into its component parts and get the review happening simultaneously and coordinated.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Further questions? Councilwoman McGinnis?
It was briefly touched, oh, I'm sorry. It was briefly touched on earlier, and I don't know if this would be more of a question directed to city staff, but the provision of monitoring was discussed, and I think that that was assigned, potentially will be assigned to Mark Miller. And I don't know if that has been fleshed out in terms of monitoring. I think it's important to know that there will be a specific contact person within city staff that will remain in charge of overseeing what's going on, but I don't know if more thought or direction has been given to what the term monitoring means, if we could expand on that.
The manager, as manager, I can delegate authority but not responsibility, so all responsibility in the organization is mine. But I am going to delegate authority and accountability to Mr. Miller to make sure that the culture that we have of professionalism in the building department remains. And so, if there's an issue, I would be looking to Mr. Miller, and then he would look to either Mr. Thompson or whoever the contact person was for that building department. And although this would be a multi-year contract, if we don't like what's going on, we will be able to exit from it.
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
May I speak to that just briefly? One of the, the internal monitoring is important. One of the best relationships that we develop in our local communities are with the local builders associations. If there is an issue with the way that we're delivering the service quality that we're providing, you know, the friendliness of our staff, the clarity of our interpretations, I mean, all of those things, if we're not doing a good job consistently, strong groups like this will bring that to the forefront. We're very motivated to make sure that doesn't happen. Part of the transition process is to understand what they like about what's currently being done, maybe some of the things that they see potential improvement, and actually working together. There are stakeholders in this, in this process. There are stakeholders in the development process in the city, and it's important to involve them in what's going on. So, a lot of times from direct feedback from those, from our company to those groups and back and forth, we'll learn more about what we're doing more than what we're not, you know, just, just through that process. So, that monitoring is important, but we're going to face much greater scrutiny out in the field from the builders and developers and homeowners that we interact with.
Councilwoman Slater?
There's an inference that you're a partnership with Mr. Carlisle's company. Can you give me some feedback on that and?
Absolutely.
And let me know what that partnership is and maybe some history on that?
There is no partnership. I can.
Mr. Thompson, can you use the microphone so that people can hear?
Oh, I apologize.
Yes.
When we came into the Michigan market, one of the things that we always look for are strong companies, similar values, also providing private, privatized services to potential clients. And through that process, we identified Carlisle-Wartman, just so happened to be at the same time that they identified our company as, you know, somebody that they were interested in speaking with. Through our interactions and our discussions with one another, we found a tremendous synergy between the companies. Again, we share very similar values. We both work strictly for local government. We don't cross over into the private sector at all. We keep that potential for conflict of interest out of everything that we do. And because we had that synergy, we realized that together we could, you know, better benefit potential communities around the state of Michigan. By being able to provide a more comprehensive service package, you know, so that you have one point of contact, a city needs planning, code enforcement, building department, if they have one point of contact that they can go to, all the better. So, we did some joint marketing with one another at MTA and a few other publications, but we have absolutely no contractual relationship, no financial relationship, no formal agreement in place, no informal agreements in place between the two companies. We work together because we're similar in style and can better benefit potential clients as a team rather than apart. Now, there is the potential down the road that, you know, as we enter into these agreements with client communities, there could very well be a contractor, subcontractor agreement between the companies. I can assure you that that does not, will not exist in the City of Troy, and there, at this point, absolutely no relationships in place.
Okay. Further questions for Mr. Thompson?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Haralak?
Thank you. Could you give, give me a list of five communities between the populations of fifty and a hundred thousand that you are contracting with right now?
Johns Creek, Georgia, I believe is about sixty-two thousand. City of Centennial, Colorado, is one hundred and ten thousand. Over that fifty range, those might be the only two. There are a couple that are in the forty thousand, forty-five thousand range. Bonita Springs, Florida. Milton, Georgia. Northland, Colorado.
Okay, thank you.
I think those are, those are probably the largest.
You mentioned, there was a question posed to you earlier about staffing. Would you say right now that the staffing in that department is understaffed, overstaffed, or about right?
And based on our experience elsewhere, without knowing exactly the processes that are put in place currently, it's difficult to answer because there, you know, there can be some process-based things that, you know, we would look at and say, you know, we don't like the process, but it requires this number of employees more than what we would normally have. Compared to a typical situation, similar activity other locations, I'd say currently the department is overstaffed. the department is overstaffed.
Who would you say your major competitors are?
Nationally, locally?
Maybe two of each?
Locally, the only, there's a company called PMI, which I believe is the other company that interviewed against us in this, in this process. They're definitely the most significant local competitor. There are a couple of other smaller companies, but they're doing kind of, you know, two, three clients here and there, so fairly small in makeup. On a national level, there's a company called Bureau Veritas. They're a French company that is probably on a, on a national level, the only company I'm aware of, relatively the same size as we are. The others are, you know, tend to be somewhat regional players and tend to be involved in other service offerings. There's a company called WILLDAN, W-I-L-L-D-A-N. They provide engineering, homeland security, and building, you know, is a piece.
Now, do you expect that your personnel will be attending the meetings that the building department personnel currently attend?
Yes.
And that is included, will be included in your service contract?
Yes.
What about the, the use of assets that are owned by the city that the building department is currently using?
Some of the items that we will, again, need to discuss during this process, you know, such as vehicles. You know, currently, you have a set of vehicles that those employees are using. It would make sense for the city, likely makes sense for us, to arrange for us to purchase those from the city. We've talked about, you know, office space within the building, actually paying you essentially what would amount to a lease for the space that we're utilizing. Everything else, you know, there is a common computer that's being used in the building department for public use. You know, we can purchase that from the city, or we can just be responsible for replacement when that comes up. You've got a copier that's on a lease that we would assume the lease. So, everything required, all of the tools required, all the capital equipment required, all of the assets required to provide building department services are ultimately our responsibility.
It's, it's my understanding that your company is hoping to perhaps add some additional municipal clients in the region. Do you foresee that there will be a movement around, so to say, of personnel between cities as staffing needs change?
Yeah, there, there will absolutely be sharing between locations. What we absolutely try to do is keep a core staff intact in, you know, each of our large client locations. But that sharing of resources, you know, that's really at the crux of the efficiency that we're, we're able to provide, regardless of fluctuations and, you know, I mean, building inspections day-to-day, week-to-week are, are all over the place. Having multiple clients so you can spread some of that workload allows us to even out those peaks a little bit.
And it's, your company would be taking over the contract July first, I believe?
Correct.
How do you foresee a transition period occurring?
I, we would imagine, or our plan is to, and we put together a detailed Microsoft project plan addressing the transition, which I'm sure staff could share with, with council. But we would want to get started with that transition process as, as quickly as allowed, you know, by the, by the city. And it involves, you know, like I mentioned, evaluating processes, discussing, you know, the current equipment, making sure that, you know, we create the transfer of those assets, process-driven issues, technology-related issues, meetings with the different stakeholders, both internal departments, external groups, making sure that they're vested and involved with the process, recommendations back to staff as to any process changes, and ultimately, you know, a, essentially a published plan, you know, that would, that would go out detailing what the department, what the changes will look like.
And finally, when do you anticipate your company will be able to provide the contracts to the city? Because we, we do, as a council, anticipate being the final approving body for the contract.
I submitted a preliminary contract to Mr. Miller last week, which I would imagine your attorney is going to want to, want to go through, add to, et cetera. So, you know, in terms of the items that we'd like to see incorporated, we've provided that information at this point.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you all very much.
I have a question for our city attorney, and it goes to that thing about the contract. I would assume that our contract with this company is going to give the city full protection of, of everything, especially when we have employees, their employees, and maybe some city employees who then will be working for Safe Built, that will go to people's homes and businesses doing inspections, et cetera. That will all be nailed down in the, in the contract. And is there some type of procedure where, I know when employees work for the city, they have to go through a background check and all of that information. Do we do the same thing in this instance? Ms. Bloom?
Mayor, first of all, I have not seen a copy of the draft contract, and certainly I will be anxious to look at that. There are some things that need to be addressed. For example, there is an attorney general opinion as well as the administrative regs that state that you have to have an employee as the building official. So, certainly that will have to be ironed out. That's one item. Secondly, there is an issue with governmental immunity. And if you have a private contractor, if it's a proprietary interest, you're going to lose governmental immunity. So, certainly we need to make sure that that is addressed as well. Other issues, such as the, you know, purchase of the cars and all of that, certainly we'll need to address all of those items in the contract. And again, since I haven't seen it yet, it's going to take us a little bit of time to get through that, to provide as many protections as we can to the city. But hopefully that addresses your question. I, I will work to, if council chooses to go forward with this, we will work as expeditiously as we can, but there are some issues that legally we do need to iron out.
Okay. Mr. Zerlik, can you address the fact that, what type of checks, balances there are on the employees? This is our, I don't know that we have a, this is really our first situation with this.
Sure.
We're used to having city employees, people we know that we've gone through, we've worked with, we know their backgrounds, et cetera. What happens with a company like this? She says we're going to lose our governmental immunity in those situations.
If that's the case, then we'll have to assure that Safe Built has sufficient liability for the inspections that they make. I haven't seen the contract either. And the purpose of the meeting today was essentially to get in direction to see if city council wanted to take, I'm going to call it a drastic measure because it is. And then if you do wish us to have us take that drastic measure, then we'll proceed to iron out the elements of the contract that's required for a smooth transition and, and the protection of the city. As far as background checks are concerned, they would be viewed at as if they were an employee. We currently have people that we privatized decades ago in the custodial service, where essentially all those employees were asked me, now they are all with a private company. I couldn't tell you the name of the company. But I'm sure that when those employees are hired, they would go through the same examination that we send, we would send our full-time employees through.
Okay. If we vote for this tonight, and then we have, the contract comes forward, and we're not satisfied that it meets our standard, we have to cross that bridge at that time of what we, what we would do. This doesn't lock us in tonight by passing this. It's only the signing of the contract that does, correct?
That's correct, but it's going to be a lot of work. Employees are going to be advised, they're going to be laid off. I'll need to know what standard, I'd like an operational definition of standard. Our current definition is that we'll provide adequate inspections that comport with the Michigan Construction Code in a timely fashion at eighty percent of our permit costs.
Okay. All right, thank you. Further questions, council? Are you ready for, Councilor Belchamini, I think you signaled, and then Councilor Mahalak?
I, I've been brought up short by the city attorney's comment. I was unaware that state law requires that the building official must be a city employee. And while I see the easiest fix to that in this situation is if Mark Miller's going to be the overseeing employee, he becomes the building official. I guess I, and I would have said this after the vote because it's not really pertinent to this, but since I'm no longer allowed to do that, I, I guess I would ask that you and Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Zerlik kind of get together so that if there are any other such laws, we're all made aware before we get this far down the road again. Because to have that kind of something, little factoid, come out at this stage, kind of got my attention. So, if you could make that happen among the three of you soon, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Mahalak?
Thank you. To me, that's a bigger issue. And the reason why it becomes a bigger issue is it becomes a material change in the award. And the other company may, it may impact their quote, actually. And the main issue, as I understand, was price, at least by my review of, of the calculations here. It looked like it was, the other company wanted ninety percent of revenue, and this one wanted seventy-five. And I have a fairly significant list of open items, and I am not comfortable moving ahead with so many open points. I think the concept is okay, but the issue isn't so much, are we okay with doing this? It's, that's negotiate a contract with this firm, and yet there, the city manager hasn't seen the proposed contract, the city attorney hasn't seen the proposed contract. The city attorney says there may be some issues with immunity, with governmental immunity. The issue with assets haven't, hasn't been addressed. It looks like there's a personnel reduction. Further question I would have would be, the personnel reduction, I can understand if you're not issuing building permits, but my point is that it's, you know, it implies that essentially we're hiring this company to do something that we could do ourselves by, I mean, anybody can, can lay off people. It certainly is, you know, we wash our hands with it and blame them, I suppose, but what about discussions with the, the affected individuals in this department? What, what can the city manager report to us as far as that's concerned? As far as, you know, perhaps they have some innovative idea to form a, an entity to, to do the same thing for the same price? I have no idea.
Mr. Zerlik?
I'll be happy to respond. I had met with all of the employees of the building department and advised them of the bid that we had for, from Safe Built. Also advised them that the bid was essentially predicated on a percent of revenues that came in, so essentially there's a guarantee. And when you have a guarantee like that, it actually makes a moot point if someone's going to take a payroll deduction, if you will, because that payroll deduction would be against a threshold of an estimated revenue line that may or may not come in. So, if the revenue line was lower than what was estimated, there'd have to be a further payroll deduction if our objective is the economic viability of, of the city of Troy. I really want to be employee-centric in this regard, but when a bid comes in that essentially guarantees no subsidy, and our rolling subsidy is in excess of five million dollars compared to our audit over the past several years, that's a lot of money, especially when we're about twenty-two million dollars short over the next five years. And I can ask Mr. Miller to address the issue of technological advances and use of technology for the, the building department. In my conversations with the employees, we did not discuss that per se, but I know that Mr. Miller has some information relative to the use of computer applications for inspectors.
Yes.
The, the building department was, was offered an opportunity, along with all departments,
to submit a proposal after looking at the privatization bid. And in this case, the, the building department did that, and in that process, they are encouraged to provide innovation in different techniques to, to achieve the same level of service or a little less level of service with the revenues that are given. And in this case, the department did not necessarily come up with any new innovative techniques to, to address this problem in a proposal. And that, that's where we're at, at this time.
If I, if I may add to that, the, the complexity of the matter, and I'll, I'll try to explain it by giving an example. If we privatized the information technology department, went to Oakland County and Bob Datto's, people took care of IT for the city of Troy, and they said, okay, John, we're going to charge a million dollars for, for all your IT services, no matter how many help calls you get, regardless of the number of computers you have, it's going to be a million bucks a year, and our payroll costs are one point two million dollars a year for the same exact function. We would absolutely go to Gert Harris-Gavin and say, Gert, can we take off two hundred thousand dollars in some way so that we can be employee-centric and keep our IT function in-house? And she would work essentially with John Lomarato and Jim Nash, and hopefully they could come up to find that delta or that difference to keep it in-house. And we would issue reports saying, you know what? The county said we could do this, but we matched it, and so we're going to keep this in-house. We're done with the IT department, let's move on to another department now. But when the issue becomes that we've had a subsidy from the general fund to the building department for the past several years, and the bid is such that there is a guarantee of no subsidy, it's virtually impossible, even through innovations, to, to beat that bid. I spoke with, with Al Kiril to get a sense on what was going on in the commercial sector of the city of Troy. And he said, what we should probably do is take the estimated number of vacant square feet that we have in the city and multiply it by eighty percent, and that'll give us our usable square footage of, in the city of Troy that's vacant. And then take that, that product or that number and divide it by two hundred and twenty square feet, and that becomes the number of jobs that have been lost that you'd have to regain before you were at full occupancy in the commercial sector to consider building new, new construction. And that number that we have is between thirteen and sixteen thousand jobs that we lost just in the city of Troy, just in office buildings. So, you know that commercial's not going to come back for a while. Al also told me that there are commercial buildings that are selling for about twenty dollars a square foot in Troy and in elsewhere. So, when you can buy commercial buildings like that at that price, chances are you're not going to be building too many new commercial buildings. The industrial sector is essentially wiped out, especially in Troy, when we have rows and rows of buildings where you have ten percent office space in front, ninety percent shop space in the back with a twenty-seven or thirty-foot high ceiling and ten parking spaces. It's going to be very hard to find automotive technology or manufacturing to fill the number of vacant spaces that we have in industry. In terms of residential construction, the market, I'm not going to say it's flooded, but there are many short sales in Troy, many foreclosures. I was talking to our labor attorney, Craig Lang, who told me that in his neighborhood, Buckingham Woods, there was a house going, he said, for twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is, you know, most cars cost more than that. So, there's probably not going to be too many new housing starts, new roofs being developed. Plus- Plus, we are about ninety-nine percent developed. In the recession that we had in the nineteen-eighties, we had vast acreages, vast square miles of vacant property, yet we had all the infrastructure in place. The roads were there, the water and sewer lines were there, waiting for new development to proceed when the recession ends. When this recession ends, we're still going to be about ninety-nine percent developed. The best we can hope for is our renovation projects and some additions. We looked at this long and hard. It's an area that is an on-demand service, and demand is down.
Well, I certainly appreciate those comments. The issues that I have are numerical. And, you know, the road is littered with governments who have contracted out and have miselocated overhead and indirect costs and even their own direct costs, and thinking that they were going to save money, in fact, added to their cost structure and drove, in a couple of cases, some communities almost to bankruptcy. And so, while there are still a number of open points out there, I don't have that comfort level to move ahead and say, this is the company, this is the firm we want to use. One of those is the issue of assets. How much asset, how much do we have asset-wise as far as vehicles, computers? What's going to happen to floor space? Because if all of these things aren't taken over by the new company at a reasonable price to us, they essentially become an added cost to us because they're a sunk loss cost. And I need actual real hard numbers on these things. What else? How many people are currently working in the department?
Nine.
Nine. And they're going to go from five to seven. Why haven't we done that?
Again, the issue is that if we have a month, January, and there's no building activity, no permits are pulled, if we privatize, there's no cost. If we have in-house personnel, there's a cost. It's a matter of workload versus your static personnel service cost that you have for the department. And I looked at this matter and brought it to your attention in much the same way as I would coming from the service end, if I could use a planning department example. You essentially have a concept of what you want, then you go to a schematic, then you go to a specification. And here, the concept that we wanted to achieve was to balance our budget in areas that would still protect public safety. We're taking, as Mayor Shilling said, we're reducing our full-time workforce by fifty-five people compared to last fiscal year. That gives us, over the past six years, over a hundred full-time positions that are expunged. Over twenty-one percent of our entire workforce, full-time, is gone as of July first. We're selecting areas where we can be most cost-efficient. If I could merely say, you know what? We'll keep seven people onboard in the billing department, and I can guarantee you that we'll only spend eighty percent of the revenues that come in from building permit fees with no subsidy from the general fund, I would absolutely do that. But I can't. I'd like to do it. I can't guarantee the Troy City Council that if I hired or kept seven people, we could operate on eighty percent of the revenues, and I could turn back twenty percent of our building department revenues to the general fund, when over the past several years, the general fund subsidized the billing department by about five million dollars. I can't do it.
Please appreciate the fact that, basically, I'm just asking you to walk down with me in my reasoning.
Sure.
I'm not trying to be argumentative by any stretch, and I want to get to the point that you are. And basically, this is my thought process. And you said there were how many people again in that department?
There's nine or ten.
Nine or ten.
Mark, ten?
Ten.
Ten.
And the direct cost that was provided to me was almost two-point-two million dollars. And perhaps one of the things that would help me is if I could have a breakdown on that, because that implies about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars per person, and I'm sure it's not all payroll costs.
About a year ago, a year and a half ago, there was twenty-one people in the department.
I'm sorry?
There was about twenty-one people in the department about a year and a half ago.
So basically, what I would need to do is get from your people a projection for the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven direct costs. And how much is that?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Lomorato to determine that.
Lomorato?
I'm mayor and city council. The two thousand ten-eleven budget has cost around nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for the building department, which includes all their operations. That includes vehicle rental, that includes all their personnel wages, fringe benefits, computer usage, copiers, office supplies, postage, whatever. It is all broken out in our budgets, and it's broken out by personal service, operating supplies, and contractual services for those items. That includes the whole, it was nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand for this next year's budget.
And revenue-wise, what is, what does the budget of revenue?
I believe it's a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's estimate.
So just the back of the envelope, it seems to me that, because you really cannot create something out of nothing, and it seems to me that the vast majority of the cost savings is reduction in personnel and reduction in pay and benefits, particularly with benefits.
I think the, I think that's a partially correct answer. The other part would be that there would be an economy of scale if SafeBilt had other clients involved in the surrounding area. But that doesn't pertain to the city of Troy. Our primary objective is that we can be assured of no general fund subsidy, regardless of the building activity that we get. And, again, it makes it a little complicated, but when you're up against a guaranteed revenue, when you're up against a guarantee of no general fund subsidy, that's almost impossible to match.
And this really is the last question, at least for now. But is this the better way to go, or would it be better for us to have an in-house base level of service with additional provided by some sort of an outside vendor? And, you know, knowing that in that case, that the fee is probably going to be a lot closer towards the hundred percent.
We looked at the possibility of retaining two people in the billing department and contracting out the balance. And frankly, I asked Mr. Steimek if he wanted to stay on, and the answer was no. We looked at that as a possibility, as an alternative.
And so, following your reasoning, you wouldn't want to promote somebody else to that position?
No, after talking with SafeBilt, again, their preference would be to have a turnkey operation. I thought that with Mr. Miller overseeing the operation, that we would, again, try the entire department to be turned over to SafeBilt with a strong contract that we would assure be in place and monitored by Mr. Miller.
Well, then that creates a problem if they want a turnkey, and the city attorney isn't entirely certain at this point that that's possible.
We'd have to find a way to do what comports with the statute, of course.
Well, I hope you can appreciate the fact that I am not to the point where I can move forward and say negotiate a contract with them. Two weeks from now, I'm sure that there would be enough information in front of me to make that decision. So my default, of course, is to vote no on the before me because of all these things. I've got all this stuff that's sitting out there, and I can't get it in the box.
Sure. And again, these are excellent questions. I'll make sure that all of them are addressed. What we wanted to do is to move forward with expediency when we take a look at our departments, because we're coming up to budget sessions, and, you know, we have a balanced budget with a declining revenue line. And by privatizing the billing department, there is a savings compared to last year that's incorporated in the fiscal year ten-eleven budget. And not to be argumentative, if we leave the billing department in place and the savings was about a half a million dollars, then I've got to find a half a million dollars someplace else. And I would be happy, you know, I will do whatever the governing body asks me to do, but my job now is to balance a budget and try to maintain the economic viability of the city of Troy, and to take a look at all departments to streamline our operations where I can, not to jam something down your throats. Again, it's a complex issue. What I'm asking for is direction to proceed, because it's going to take, you know, once there's a resolution to proceed, it would be contingent, of course, upon having a contract that is beneficial to the city of Troy, quite frankly. And if we can't get that, then we would not proceed. I'd have to find the funding elsewhere.
See, that's what I asked earlier. Yes, Counselman Kiril?
I'm wondering if Mr. Thompson can perhaps let us know whether there is another municipality contracted here in Michigan. That way, we would know that there's a contract out there.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, there are a number of companies that have these contracts in place with municipalities. In fact, Dick Carlyle's company has one of these in place in, is it Riverview?
It's Riverview, yeah.
So, and DMI, I believe, has this relationship in place with nine other municipalities. It's a, it is fairly commonly occurring. So, yes, those contracts are in place.
Thank you. Which would indicate, I think, that some of those issues that our attorney brought up have been worked out in other municipalities.
Are you folks ready for a resolution?
Mayor?
Counselman Harlak?
I guess I disagree with the conclusion that the city manager draws, because if I were in his shoes, and my counsel said, give me two more weeks, and I were the city manager, and I had to direct my CFO to drop the contract, and I knew that one way or another, we were going to be down to five, probably fifty percent of the current staffing level, I would go back to my staff and I'd say, listen, here's the deal. I got this third party that can provide these services for, and provide the city with, oh, between twenty and twenty-five percent of its revenue stream with no direct cost. I'd say, if you want, and you can form a company between now and, let's say, I'll even give you until the end of the year, all I'm going to have to do is lay off some people, but everybody can keep their jobs, and you can have your own cellphone entity. And if you want to do that, then it's yours. But I can't do it forever, so I'm going to have to put a timeframe on it. In the meantime, what I'd do is I unfortunately would have to pare down the personnel to the level which would be equivalent to what Mr. Thompson is planning to do. And if there's additional costs, because, which really there shouldn't be, because, again, you cannot create something out of nothing. And you should be able to take what we have providing at our costs, and you should be able to put together a mathematical number, an equation, if you will, and come to their number, because there shouldn't be anything in the middle. Money never grows on trees, believe me. And in the meantime, if there's still an issue with budgeting, then you simply use your fund balance and in your budgeting process. It's really not that complicated. So I don't believe that this is a make-or-break decision for this evening. I believe that there are a whole lot of questions, and it can be answered, many of them in the next two weeks. And it would be my advice to wait those two weeks so that there is that comfort button.
Counselman Harlak, would you be able to be here in two weeks for a meeting? It was my understanding that you would be out of the country.
That is correct. You're right.
And when are you planning on returning?
Well, apparently, I'm not taking much of a honeymoon, so (laugh) I'll be back, and for that, for the first, as far as the regular meetings are concerned, you know, I won't be missing any in May.
Pardon?
I will not be missing any in May.
Okay. Because I knew that the wedding was in May, but I knew that you were leaving. And I know you're asking to have, the reason I bring it up is that you're asking this to be delayed for two weeks, but you won't be here in two weeks when we have this discussion, if we were to delay.
Well, two things. One is, you know, it doesn't have to be two weeks. It could even be this next meeting that we're talking about. The other thing is, it's not, if I'm the only one that has an issue with it, then move ahead, by all means. But I think these are valid points, and I would hope that others perhaps have the same piece of mind.
Well, I think you've brought up some points, as we all have, of things that we want to see in a contract, and some things that we want to have answered. And that's why I asked early on, even if we authorize this tonight, when our contract comes, if we're not satisfied, we're not locked in. So I think that's very crucial to everyone. But I was just concerned about delaying it for two weeks and then not having people here for the meeting. Further questions? Counselman Belchemania?
Question for the city manager. You have a choice. We give you authorization to negotiate a contract. I gave you a laundry list of issues on the telephone. You've heard several from Counselman Harlak here. I'm sure that each of us has contacted you with at least one. So you've got twenty-five things to work into a contract. And quite honestly, I'm also sure that you have no idea what the hottest button that any of us gave you is. So you work as many of those into the contract, you work with the city attorney and figure out how to handle the legal aspects. You bring a contract back to us on the seventeenth of May, or whatever that is, and we say no. Not good enough, we're unhappy. Is that better than postponing this until the nineteenth of April? It gets your budget done, but is that better? That's my choice. That's your choice. And I'm asking as a professional which roads you'd rather have.
I'd rather have, I'd rather have a road where you advise what you'd like to see in the contract. We'll try to get that in the contract. It'll be submitted with the report. It'll be accompanied with the, you know, with an associated savings, estimated savings, because we're not future tellers. Again, the savings here essentially is predicated on no general fund subsidy, regardless of the permit fees that come in. My druthers would be to have a budget document that's approved, that reflects, well, my druthers would be to not have to be in this situation, quite frankly. Okay? That's my number one issue.
All of us.
Would be to maintain all of our employees as they are with no layoffs and go back to the levels that we had. That would put us bankrupt, okay? Or else, at the very least, having the state of Michigan say, Mr. Zerlik, you can't balance a budget, move over, and we're going to balance it for you. So that's what I'm trying to avoid. If you want to delay this for whatever reason, I'm trying to fashion, if you did delay it and I have twenty-five questions, am I going to get ten more questions in two weeks? I mean, that's, I don't know
I understand.
What else I could do besides take your concerns and try to mold them into a contract that would give me two weeks less to try to get concurrence?
Okay.
That's my only, that's my response.
I just wondered.
Sure.
All right.
Just an observing.
Further, Counselman Kiril?
Just an observation, and I will support the resolution. I think from a big-picture perspective, that we recognize that services, the way we deliver services is going to change. They're going to change in every single unit of government. Councilmember McGinnis asked earlier, and I thought it was a good question, which is, what will this look like? And I do liken it to Kroger's now, when you can walk in and, oh, I get my coffee here, there's a Starbucks in the store, but I don't really think about it. I just think, well, there's where I get my coffee, and here's Comerica Bank, that's where I go to my bank. But it's all in the same building. It's just delivering services, services that people need in a quick, kind of efficient way. They have that economy of scale where they're housed in the same place, and it's a convenience-driven model. model. I think that we have to be flexible as we approach that new delivery of services. Surely, in an oversight way, we need to be mindful of what we're looking at. But the question here is, is this the, an acceptable direction? It doesn't take general fund dollars. In fact, it returns money into the general fund. That's the big picture method. The services will be delivered. Um, the quality is there and has been shown to be there. There is oversight, uh, both from management and here. Is this a direction, an acceptable direction for council? That's the big picture. Then all of the details, we would expect, um, the city attorney and management to sit down and carefully look at not only that document, but anything that's found in the agenda, to look at it ahead of, ahead of meetings. So I'm hoping to see that kind of cooperation happen.
Of course.
Okay, that's, and, and I will, um...
Further, further questions, Sam? Further comments?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Slater?
I just feel like I need to say, um, I don't want to do this, um, but the alternative is we have to take a half a million dollars from somewhere else. And that means we're going to have to take bodies from somewhere else. And so I think this is the best alternative to do it now. So I don't want to do it, but I'm going to have to vote yes.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Horlak?
It's, 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 it's actually, it, it's ju- just, just real quick, you know, it, it's not, uh, it's, it's not rocket science. They're coming in, they're slashing pay, they're slashing benefits, and they're slashing personnel. And, um, you know, we're basically hiring a hatchet man. And if, as long as they can provide the services, then that's fine. But it's not be under any illusion that they're doing anything manageable that we cannot do here either. So just think about that. And then there's all that other stuff that we've been talking about this evening that I have great discomfort with. We may get to the same point, but, um, I'm not ready to do it tonight.
Further discussion? The vote, then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shelly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, item H-10 is a request for a study session to further discuss restructuring Troy government, and there are several dates, uh, suggested, uh...
Your Honor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's two more dates that you should have, the thirteenth and fourteenth.
Uh, I see that, uh, but I was just going to say that some of the dates suggested are not, uh, do not fit with some of the schedules. For example, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-first doesn't work for something that's already scheduled then, and, uh, Friday, the sixteenth is not, or either Friday is not good. And the thirteenth and fourteenth, I think, is not good for two
Four.
Council members here. That leaves the Thursday or the Tuesday. That's what I ascertained so far. April fifteenth, uh, April twentieth or April twenty-second?
Oh, ma'am, Mary.
Uh, Councilman Kerwin?
I think April fifteenth is, in fact, youth recognition.
No, it's the twenty-first.
No, that's the twenty-first.
That's the twenty-first, that's why I took that date out.
There's something on the fifteen.
Next day.
No, no, there is something.
Yes, uh, Councilman Kerwin?
Uh, I just...
You're saying the twentieth or the twenty-second? You think there's something on the fifteen?
I think there's something on the fifteen. I'm wondering, um, if, if this would be acceptable, if we could go home, uh, and look at those three days, the remaining days, the twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, email back then.
The twenty-first.
Not the twenty-first.
Excuse me.
Yes, Ca- Councilman Belltrame?
The twenty-first is youth recognition.
Right, yes.
Okay, so that's gone.
That's why I crossed that one off.
Some of us are tied up.
That's why I crossed that one off already, 'cause, you know, I knew that was busy. Okay, twentieth or the twenty-second, I think we could just decide between those two tonight. If you haven't looked at your calendar, uh, by now.
Anytime you mention, we'll show up.
Uh, Councilman Fleming?
So, Councilman Horlak was suggesting thirteenth to fourteenth. That's out for how many people?
Yeah, that's in, um, well, we all...
Several.
We all, we all made those reservations.
You're, the reservation that you're going to be out, you're going to be in Lansing?
Yeah.
That's registration, that has been done.
Cause I'm available any of those days.
Okay, twentieth or twenty-second?
We're okay with either.
Pardon?
We can do either.
Either one?
Let's call it either one and go home.
Pardon? Well, he won't be here. Really? Is that what you said?
I, I'm, I'm here on the, what's today, the sixth, the seventh, the eighth, the ninth, the tenth, the eleventh, the twelfth, the thirteenth, and the fourteenth.
Of May.
Right.
I think Councilman, uh, Horlak, that Mr. Zerlak wanted to re, meet before then, before our first budget study session on the twenty-third.
This is April.
Can I?
April.
Oh.
Do it sooner than the fifteenth.
Yeah. What are we doing tomorrow?
Well, I think that he's...
Um, Mr. Zerlak will not be here, remember?
Oh, that's right, he's going to Georgia.
Twentieth or the twenty-second, folks?
Let's go for the twentieth.
All right, move a resolution, Councilman. Councilman Kerwin?
We, Councilman Kerwin?
Pardon?
We therefore resolve that Troy City Council hereby schedules a special study meeting to further discuss restructuring City of Troy government in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, five hundred West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, four eight oh eight four, on Tuesday, April twentieth at, what time did we want?
Seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Seven PM.
Seven.
Seven.
April twentieth, seven, seven PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we do a special study meeting on Tuesday, April twentieth at seven PM. Correct?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Horlak?
Uh, what, what is the point of this meeting again?
To discuss the restructuring Troy government, and he's given us a memo with things he wants us to talk about at that meeting.
Right, um, I guess my question is, is it going to be a presentation or is there going to be a real discussion?
I'm working on a, uh, on a memo, uh, that will pose some questions that I think would, uh, generate a decision on behalf of the governing body. In terms of capital funding, there was some projects that were identified as non-essential, and I want to just get direction on how you want to allocate what the governing body termed as non-essential capital funding. You want to put them in unfunded infrastructure, uh, needs that we have? Do you want to use them to, uh, delay layoffs, uh, throughout the organization? If that answer is yes, do you want to delay layoffs in the administrative area, the public safety area, the quality of, of life area? Or do you want to leave the money in situ or in place to leverage for future grant funds? Uh, in terms of the quality of life venues, I'd like to have, uh, you know, reports essentially from, uh, uh, the library, museum, and nature center on, on what they're doing. And, uh, there will be, uh, recommended to have reduced hours in those areas. Want to talk about what you wanted and what your advice would be for reduced hours. Uh, in terms of the refuse fund, Mr. Lamorato mentioned what we needed, uh, to, uh, make the refuse fund essentially self-sufficient. I was asked to come back with the policy. John will have, have that policy. If we could iron those out in advance of the actual budget deliberations, that might smooth things through, uh, when we get to those topics. That was the reason for the meeting.
And, um, let's see here, so you would actually like to get this done before the budget, which is, I think, May tenth, is it?
Right, well, the budget, uh, will, is going out when, Jan?
Mayor City Council, the budget will be delivered to you at April nineteenth, City Council meeting. Then April twenty-sixth is our first budget session, and May third is the second budget study session with adoption May tenth.
And adoption May tenth, that's what I was getting at. Um, what else did I write down? And, uh, we, so we cannot meet next Monday?
You can do what you like, I, I will not be here.
Okay.
Uh, in the alternative, I'll be happy to meet with anyone, uh, that, I'm coming back a week from tomorrow. And, uh, anyone that can't make that meeting, I'll be happy to sit down with them and, uh, and get your opinions and, and share them with the, uh, with the governing body on, on these items.
Further discussion? You know, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the meeting on the twentieth?
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, just as a point of reference, I have been engaged for fifteen months, so this isn't anything new. And that's why I voted against it, because I just, I'm just, I'm just very frustrated. I think that, um, you know, um, the, you know, if anybody can change their schedule, I can't. I'm not the one who can change my schedule.
Thank you. Would you be able to move on to the consent agenda? Okay, are there any high items the council wants to have exempted from the consent agenda? Uh, yes, Councilman McGinnis?
I eleven, please.
Pardon?
I eleven.
I eleven? Is that what you also said?
No.
I eleven? Uh, Mayor Protem Fleming?
I four D and I four E.
I four D and I four E. Okay? Any others?
Mayor, I four H, uh, excuse me, I.
Pardon? I four I?
I four I, yeah, a lot of Is there.
All right, yeah. I four I, okay. Any others? Okay, uh, then could we have a resolution, uh, yes, Councilman Kerwin?
Resolve that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of items I four D, I four E, I four I, and I eleven, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Belltrame, that we approve all council, all agen- consent agenda items with this vote, except for I four D, E, and I, and I four eleven. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Yes.
I eleven.
Pardon?
Kerwin?
Mrs. Councilwoman Kerwin?
It was just a point of clarification.
Pardon?
Just a point of clarification, it's I eleven, not I four eleven.
I eleven.
I eleven, did I say I four eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, it's I eleven. Yes, Councilman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, I four D, then we'll do I four E, and then I four I, and then I eleven. Okay? I four D. Who asked for that?
Me.
Yes, uh, Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes, we're looking at purchasing, uh, these vehicles, these fleet vehicles. We're coming up on a budget and we're looking at spending ninety-three thousand dollars. I'm asking management, is there any way we can delay this capital expenditure until after we go through the budget? Why do we have to buy ninety-three thousand dollars worth of vehicles now?
Before the budget.
Before the budget.
Uh, hopefully Mr. Lamorato, John's brother, is, is, can, uh, come to the microphone and, and...
Is that mic working? If not, we'll have him come over here.
Same thing for E.
Same thing for E, he says.
River.
Okay, Mayor, Council, the reason we were waiting, we are purchasing these vehicles today, or trying to purchase these vehicles tonight, is we are against a deadline. Chevrolet has, and Ford both have build-out deadlines, and we are up against those deadlines this week and within the next two weeks for Ford Motor Company. It's hard to believe with what we read and hear in the press about automobile companies, but there are build-outs, and those dates are approaching this week and in the next two weeks for certain other models. So if we don't purchase, for instance, some of the Chevrolet products, we will miss our window for this year's purchasing.
I have a question, Your Honor, for Sam.
Yes, Mr. Zerlak?
Sam, what's our criteria for vehicle replacement?
We look at, our system looks at fifteen points on a vehicle criteria to replace it. We look at the cost versus the residual, the cost to continue to maintain versus the residual cost of that vehicle. Some of these vehicles we're replacing are becoming, they're eight to ten years old. And last year, we did not purchase very many vehicles at all. So if we continue to delay our purchasing of vehicles, we're going to be setting ourselves up for some of the real expensive operating costs to maintain vehicles. Also, not only to maintain vehicles, it's going to take us longer to keep these vehicles at what we consider safe operating condition. More expensive, and plus we'll have a delay in services because vehicles will be, you know, more downtime on these vehicles. So, again, we have a, our, our division has a model of twenty-four hours turnaround for vehicles to be repaired back on the road. That's why we can maintain a minimal staff of people and vehicles as replacements. So, again, we did not purchase very many vehicles at all last year. This year, we're, it's an extreme cutback again for purchasing vehicles.
That was your question also for E.
Yeah, I'm just looking at D and E, and I see a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars worth of vehicles. I'm thinking, that's a lot of money, we, we could not spend that money before the budget.
Well, again, several of these vehicles are very high in mileage, especially some of the, uh, police department vehicles are, you know, they're up in the high eighties, approaching ninety thousand miles. And if you factor in their idle time to these vehicles, you're up into a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles on these vehicles.
Okay, um, do you want to move, uh, D and E, somebody? Oh, excuse me, Councilman McGinnis?
I guess I had a, a question in terms of, I know, um, in our materials, it was indicated that D, um, was to replace police and public works vehicles, and E was police and fire. Um, I was just wondering if you could break down in, in particular, um, what the vehicles were generally used for.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you over here, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry, I probably wasn't speaking into the microphone. I was just wondering if you could give us a breakdown of what the listed vehicles were used for within the different departments.
The fire department will be using the fire, the expedition, and the, the van, the cargo van, the pickups will be used by public works. The other vehicles as listed will be used by the police department.
Yeah, I think that answers it.
Any other questions on D and E? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Horlak, did you have a question on D and E?
I did, and it's more so with E there.
Oh, all right, wait, just a minute. With E, yes, go ahead.
Um, specifically, what are they used for? Like, specific purposes?
For the, all of the vehicles listed.
Uh, well, you've got, uh, an expedition, an explorer, a sport truck, a Fusion.
The expedition by the fire marshal, the others will be by the police department, with the exception of the pickup trucks, the Chevrolet pickup truck, and the Chevrolet cargo vans will be used by public works.
Right, okay, that makes sense, but, um, the, um, I, I guess it's more of a general policy, and perhaps that's something we may want to talk more about during budget session. And that's the policy of, of vehicle replacement. And, you know, I guess it, just a general question of, can we stretch this anymore? Because that's really what, what it comes down to. I mean, i- if you make the decision, you said these need to be replaced, there are only two things that we can really do. It's, do we need these vehicles anymore? And if so, is there any way we can stretch them anymore? Other than that, we don't really have much decision-making to do.
Yes, believe me, our, our staff goes as far as we can to stretch these vehicles, Yes, believe me, our, our staff goes as far as we can to stretch these vehicles. And it comes to a point where we're going to continue to throw operating costs into these vehicles. And we're going to, yes, we'll save capital budget, but we're going to put more operating money and ask for more operating to continue to repair these vehicles. And, again, there's more expensive options and components on these vehicles that start to fail, and then we're putting, again, more money into a vehicle that's not worth, you know, the additional funds.
And it seems to me that the prices we're getting through the cooperative are very attractive.
The prices this year are very attractive, and several were rollover prices from the previous year. The General Motors, Ford, and Chrysler rolled their prices over, so we got some really, really good prices this year.
And Councilwoman Bellamy?
Mr. Lamorato, just as, as an educational point for me, please. I want an Explorer, I can go down to the Ford dealership and order one built. Are you saying that because of either the purchasing route we use, or what we want on it, that we pretty much have a single time of year that we can order those vehicles?
We don't have a single time of the year, but we have a cutoff window that General Motors, Ford, Chrysler give us great value, great discounts on our vehicles. So they allow fleets to purchase to a certain point. Then they cut that purchasing off, so they can continue to build full retail-priced vehicles for everybody else to buy.
So we only get our discount if we purchase within a certain window?
Yes, and I could, again, that window is closing as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Questions? Okay, can we take D and E together? Okay, could we have a resolution on D and E?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Bellamy?
I would move approval of both I-4D and E as written and proposed.
Moved by Councilwoman Bellamy, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve items D and E as written and proposed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-4I was requested? Um, was that Councilwoman Howard?
It was, thank you, Mayor. General policy issue, and, and this is my understanding, Big Beaver Civic Center Landscape Maintenance, this is enhanced service provided by the, essentially by the DDA. My concern is that unless things have changed since we last talked about the DDA, there's an issue with their, their debt funding over the term of the debt that's outstanding. And so, what happens, if I'm, again, if I'm understanding this correctly, is, is we can either bank the money, if we, if we don't have enhanced services issued, we basically save money, perhaps be able to push that DDA, so to say, back a little bit farther. Or, we can spend the money now, and eventually what happens is, if there's no general increase in the mill levy, then, then we have to go back to the taxpayers and the DA and ask them to have a DDA tax increase. And I don't think we want to do that simply to have a prettier median for, you know, three or four months of the year. And so I would rather us roll this into the general city contract, and, although we may want to put in some specs so that they don't butcher it, and the contractor, they generally do a decent job with the rest of the city, but I don't think, you know, again, we're talking about all of these things. We're talking about outsourcing, laying off, canceling Troy Days, issues potentially with the DDA bonds in the future. I, I don't think this is the road I'm in favor of going down.
Mr. Zerlai?
Sure, I'm not sure who's the most qualified to answer, if it would be Carol, or Tim, or Mark, but if one of you could take the, the microphone and explain the kinds of plantings that we have, and if we could, and also address Mr. Howard's question.
Yes, thank you. You're, you're, um, the, the fact is that this is a different level of service on, can't hear me?
No, sorry. I think maybe I should spend some money and get some new equipment in here.
Thank you. Yes, there is a different level of service on the, in this contract than there is the other contractor that the city has doing landscape work. There is the availability in the other contract for added acreage, so, um, at, at, certainly at a different price per acre than what this is. The, the idea of that saving money and then making that available later for DDA use, I think is a, is a finance question that I'm probably not fast.
Wait, I'll get over there, and we can't hear you again.
Okay, um, whether that, how, how that would work finance-wise, and whether the money could be saved and so on to pay down debt at another time is, I think, a question for Mr. Zerlai or Lamorato.
Okay, who wants to take that one?
Go ahead, Sam.
I saw him thinking back there.
Uh, Mayor City Council, the, the maintenance for the boulevards and so forth includes, we call it enhanced, because it does include for the perennials that we have out there versus annuals, to ma, to maintain those. It also, maybe it's more fertilization than we do in other areas of the city and so forth. It's more trimming, it's, the DDA, um, even though we are facing difficult times coming up, the DDA, it's one of their things that they really look for, and to have the upkeep of that median up and down Big Beaver. It's their, it's city capture taxes and other capture taxes and so forth that pay for that, but they, um, the landscaping on those islands are, it's more enhanced than other islands throughout, medians down further in Big Beaver, or other areas in Long Lake, or other areas in the city, so it does require some more maintenance. Whether we could save 30,000 or so more, or whatever, if we just went to the bare minimum of cutting and maintaining and so forth, it also includes any of the picking up and more continuously picking up trash and the garbage and stuff that blows around those areas. Now, that Commercial Strip gets a lot of debris that does flow in that area. So it includes all those enhanced features within this contract. If it's council's desire, you know, they're, they are facing some financial, just like the city is, they're facing some financial concerns coming up here in the next couple of years also. And we'll be dealing with that shortly with the DDA and their budget, and then also come to City Council on what, how we have to address that. But, um, it's, basically, it's motive for this property here, the Civic Center site and the, and that boulevard area to just a little bit more enhanced maintenance of those facilities.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
I guess the question is specifically, which pot of money would it be wisest to take it from? Whether it would be taking it from DDA now, it's captured, it's not out of the general, or knowing that down the road, the DDA is going to be experiencing difficulties, would it be wise to take it from this pot, the general fund now? That's the question.
Well, we have it, it's built into the budget as a reimbursement from the DDA to the general fund to provide those costs along that boulevard. It's items we do not do in other parts of the city, and it's just a little more enhanced maintenance. DDA Board has always requested that, and something that we built into these specifications along with our City Hall site here. We have cut back on a lot, you noticed the amount of mowing areas around the City Hall site and other areas of the city to reduce the, some of that cost. But, um, it's, it's a very large number that the DDA is going to be facing, and we could chip away at it, at a little 30,000 here or there, but it's a much, much larger number down the road here than, to reduce back on the maintenance here. We're trying to make it an attractive spot and to keep it up and so forth, and that's what they, the DDA looks for. And they've allocated the money in the past for funding of that service, to reimburse the city for it.
We have not discussed it as a DDA as yet, council. I'm just assuming that because it's in the DDA, and it usually pays for it with DDA funds, it should stay there. As far as the DDA, you know, we've seen the projections on the bonds. The only thing that would alleviate that is extending the life of the DDA longer, so that when we see, as you look at the taxable value estimates year by year, when things get back up in 20 years to the 2008 levels, that, you know, so that the DDA can cover their, their bonds, and they may have to be extended out, I don't know. We haven't, we haven't discussed all of that, anyway, but we've talked about the fact of what the numbers are going to be, but how we're going to cover it, it has to be covered somehow. But I would assume that if the DDA decides that, uh, we, they should not do any extensive planting, you know, just do the minimum maintenance on the boulevards during that period, and that would, they would say that, and that wouldn't be as much. I can't speak for the whole DDA, only one member.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Bellamy?
A question for Mrs. Anderson, please, if I might.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson, thanks for coming to this mic. It's much easier to hear from this one than that one. I think it's the acoustics of the room, too.
What does the enhanced service on the Civic Center site give us over the mowing contract towards the rest of the city?
It, it really no longer does have an enhanced appearance. We have eliminated the annuals on the site. We have eliminated nearly all of the irrigation. There may be a little bit of irrigation still at the front of City Hall. The annuals that have been planted in the front of City Hall no longer will be done. And there certainly are no mow areas that are, you know, that we've let grow. What, however, this contract does include fertilization on the site and the elimination of the frag-mities across from the, the library that is, is not usually part of what one would consider a mowing contract that would be done separate, or has been done separate, in other areas of the city. But generally speaking, there is not really any enhanced landscaping on the Civic Center site any longer.
Any weed?
Control, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That was my question.
We control and fertilization.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Questions for, is this for Mrs. Anderson?
It is, yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Howard?
The, I'm almost certain, actually, about as almost certain as I can be, that your, that your unit costs on this are much higher than on your other contracts for the services provided at the city because of the quality of the workmanship in the serviced area. Meaning, you know, they're not just going out and cutting the lawn. For, for example, there is a, you know, you'll see a big difference between somebody cutting the grass on Long Lake and somebody cutting on Big Beaver, the, before, during, and after, the whole process. So you, and if you look at the cost, there's definitely a difference. And the, um, so, the question, you know, I don't think we necessarily need to fine-tune this too much, but it's more of a, a point that I'm making is that I don't necessarily believe that we need to pay for that. The, the service, obviously, the lawn needs to be cut, and we probably want to continue to take care of weed control, and probably, you don't need to fertilize as much, but that's, again, another issue. My point being is that we can probably save some money here, or we can simply prove the contract is. Is, because of the issues with the DDA, I think we should probably try to turn it back a little bit more.
The, I, I believe the way the contract reads is, we pay for, obviously, we pay for services that are completed, and we can reduce those services requested through the contract. We certainly can look at that and, and reduce those as, as appropriate. You are correct that there are different level of services, even the number of times that, that fertiliz, fertilization is done on, on this contract compared to the others, number of times of edging and, and that level of service. You're absolutely accurate, and we can reduce those as, as appropriate, with hopefully not diminishing the look of the DDA in this entire area.
Okay, Councilwoman Kerwin?
From what you've just said, I'm wondering then, is the awarding of the contract, is this something we would want to postpone? And come back with, you know, there was a mention of annuals, would we want to change some of those things, or?
No, the, the annuals are reduced in the way, the scope of the work, the specs were written for this contract.
All right, so although those were mentioned, they have been all reduced?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, too.
And, and, yeah.
Or the number of years, this is a three-year contract, would it be wise to go for one year?
Well, I believe it was bid as a three-year contract.
All right, thank you.
And that's where the cost savings is, because of bidding and the.
Where bid, it was bid, knowing that.
Yes, Councilwoman Bellamy?
If nobody else has anything to say. I guess I'm sort of like my colleague here. If there are areas where we can cut that contract back a little bit, I, I would recommend that we do that, as opposed to putting $30,000 in the bank. Because I also believe that, the old adage, you never get a second chance to make a first impression. And with the vacancies up and down Big Beaver, if the median also looks blighted, they will be difficult to fill. So we need to have some level of service, look like we care about our Main Street. And I think, you know, cutting the annuals to virtually nothing and reducing those kinds of things, but the trash still has to be picked up. It still has to look like we care how it looks and the like. So I, I would encourage you to use your own best judgment, but I do think that we need that level of service in our front yard.
Further discussion on this item?
Just, just.
Councilwoman Howard?
Just two quick questions. What is the, what is the additional cost to use Canon versus simply extending the contracts for our existing contractors?
On other areas of the?
Meaning, if we just said, okay, no, no, thank you, Canon, we're going to use the other contractor for the DDA, for the lawn cutting, and I think Davy or somebody or another for the fertilizing?
I, I do not have those costs in front of me for the other contract. The other contract, the median contracts are separated mowing contract, fertilization, and, and so on. So I, and, and I don't have any of those with me tonight. But there, there is some difference.
Okay, and the other thing is, would it be possible for us to simply award this as a one-year contract with the extension? Which would allow us to look at this again next year from a policy perspective?
Didn't they give us a lower price because it was a three-year?
Well, it was, it was bid as a, as a three-year contract, and I would defer to the purchasing director on whether that can be done, or.
Madam Mayor, in the meantime.
I'll hear, she's right here.
Okay. Just a quick, quick comment on the, we have had a merry-go-round of people bid on our median grass mowing anyhow, so I'd be reluctant to say, oh, good, now you can also have gateway. So I, I would have a problem.
Yeah, the, the contractor for the other mowing contract is new this year and untested. Canon has been doing this for the past at least two years, and maybe longer than that. The question is, if you did not hear it, is because this was bid as a three-year, does it have to be awarded as a three-year, or could it be awarded as, as less than that?
If you choose to reduce this to a one-year contract, I would have to go back to the vendor and make sure that he would agree to that at the prices that he submitted.
Are you assuming that his, that low cost is because it's a three-year contract?
That's typical, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mary.
I, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I know that you sit on DDA, and I, I would appreciate it if you would give our input into that going forward, that we want it to look nice, but not that nice.
Right. I think when we have our next DDA meeting, we're going to have some healthy discussions on lawn items. on line items.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Horlack?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to actually move forward the resolution, except with a one-year contract. And the other change is instead of two one-year options, it will be four one-year options. That way, if we exercise all of them, they still get their five years.
So you're moving the resolution for one year. What was the rest of it?
With four one-year options, too.
Four one-year options, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm second.
Moved by Councilwoman Horlack, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we have a, a one-year contract with four one-year options. Discussion?
I guess my question would be, would you have to then go back again? Is that in essence?
It would have to go back again and I'm not sure that we're going to see the savings that we think we're going to with a one-year contract, was my point. Yes, Mrs. Larstein?
What I would end up doing is if that's the route council chooses to go, I would go back to the vendor and tell them, this is the contract that's been approved. Are you in agreement with that of the prices submitted? If they took an exception to it or wanted to change some of their pricing, we would have to come back to you and let you know what their decision was and we can, we'd have to modify it or perhaps rebid the contract under some revised specifications, something.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion of that?
Mayor?
Motion?
I'll just have, we have done this before.
Pardon?
We, we have done this before without any issue.
Quite possible, may not be an issue, but I mean, that's, that's the case. I mean, that's very possible, that the vendor will agree and you'll not see me again, so.
Well, on a practical level, if they wait any longer, it's going to take them a lot more time to do the same amount of work.
Right.
Okay.
Any further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, then, on the new motion?
Councilwoman Horlack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
You got it?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
No.
Councilwoman Beltzamini?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes? Then on the main motion, or is that the main motion? That is the substitute motion, right? Only one vote, okay. All right, I 11, was it yours, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, I think that there have been some issues that have been brought to the.
Wait, wait, before you start, we're, we're not hearing you down at this end tonight for some reason. Go ahead, sorry.
I pulled this off of the consent agenda because I think that there have been some issues that have been brought to the attention of council and obviously the police department in this issue. I did ask a question that was supplemental to what we received in our packets. I think that there's, there's, there's been a, an investigation into everything. I think that some of the pieces may not have been laid out because of the, the nature of, of the investigation. But I, I just want to clarify that in accordance with what's being recommended from the police department, that this has been something that's been adequately investigated. I guess I just want to hear from Chief Mayor really more or less to outline the response that, that was given here in the, in the additional question or, or just in general, the investigation that went into this process. And you can speak on a general or a specific level.
And we received the detailed investigation in that email to us, yes? And we do this for any transfer?
Yes.
Excuse me, awarding of a new liquor license or transfer, wise to investigation? Yes.
Mayor and council, this was indeed a, a difficult investigation. It was lengthy. It was supervised by Captain Shurlink. He has a lot more intimate detail on it than I do, so I would like to have him address specifically the question and he can give a more succinct summary.
Okay, thank you. Captain Shurlink?
Thank you. The report that you received is a very brief summary of a very in-depth background investigation, the nature of which contains sensitive information, criminal histories, police reporting and those kind of matters that it really aren't suitable for release in a public document. Suffice it to say that we became aware of some of the allegations that were outlined in your packet and investigated those to the best of our ability based on the individuals who came forward insisting on remaining confidential. We did refer this to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, who are the investigating arm of the state and are most adequately equipped to go into a liquor establishment and take a look at these kind of allegations. They did conduct an onsite investigation at their premises and found no evidence to support any of the assertions that we became aware of or that they were made aware of as well through similar anonymous tips. Based on that, we continued to try to identify and follow up these sources and were in fact able to interview five individuals. Out of the five, I think three indicated they had witnessed some of these issues, two indicated they had heard about some of these issues. We did continue to follow up with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission as well as the Department of Health. And again, the response back was that investigations several had taken place by the Health Department and no violations were found or necessitated further follow-up. Our background investigation into the applicant indicated 22-plus years of bar ownership in three other jurisdictions. I think it's safe enough to say that there were absolutely no, there was absolutely no history, no violations, no civil issues under, that we discovered in the course of that background investigation. The only issue that we did come up, come across in, in regard to the applicant's past bar ownership was a very minor warning that she received from the city of Sterling Heights. So again, there were no enforcement actions, no civil litigation that we were able to find, no criminal, no criminal violations at the premises and no Michigan Liquor Control Commission violations in 22 and a half years of ownership by this applicant. Fortunately, we are still in position to have the resources in place here to continue to follow up on these kind of complaints. So in closing our recommendation to you, we indicated that we continue to do compliance checks at all our liquor establishments in town. Some of those include plainclothes, police visits, plainclothes operations involving student enforcement aides, as well as routine visits by uniform patrol officers. So we, we will apprise them of these issues and make sure they continue to be aware of them as they visit this and all establishments in town. And generally, that occurs a minimum of six times a year. So we are still in a position to continue to monitor this. I would further add that we worked in close cooperation and advice through our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Susan Lancaster provided us counsel in our, our process here. And we did consider pursuing an administrative search warrant to go into this establishment and try to do additional investigation. The issue that we were up against in that regard, though, was the Michigan Liquor Control Commission had already visited that establishment, conducted an investigation and found absolutely no evidence to substantiate these claims. So the concern was that if we went in after that kind of investigation, cleared them, we may be in, in a situation where the information we were acting on was somewhat tainted in terms of trying to get a search warrant. So it was determined we didn't have enough evidence to pursue an administrative search warrant, although we did consider that action. The applicant made herself available to both an interview with our investigators as well as submitted a written response to a list of questions that they provided her and denied all of these allegations. But again, we can reinforce that we'll continue to monitor this situation because we're fortunate enough to be able to do that at this point. So I believe the applicant is here and can respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Further questions, Councilwoman McGinnis?
That was.
Councilwoman Slater? Is this a question for Captain Shurlink?
Sure. Captain, is, is the applicant, is she like the manager of, of the Mr. B's at, at this time? Is that, how are these?
I believe there's a transition process in place. This is an individual seeking to purchase this establishment, came in to learn the operation and her explanation of her role there is a position of, of transition between trying to purchase, learn the operation, and eventually complete that transaction. Another concern, quite frankly, that we had, literally, we have dozens and dozens of staff time into this and it was time-consuming dealing with the different state departments. There is a sale pending and continued delay without evidence to delay it could put the city and the police department in a situation where if we, if we continue to delay and this sale becomes jeopardized, we may have some issues there as well. So that was another concern.
Further questions? Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to move the item then, Councilwoman McGinnis, if you're satisfied?
Yes, I am.
A and B?
Yes, I would move the resolution as printed, both A, the transfer of license and new dance entertainment permit, new SDM license, and B, the agreement.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Beltzamini, that we approve A and B as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shelley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltzamini?
Yes.
Yes.
Call that?
Yes.
Item passes. That concludes the consent agenda items. We have council referrals and then we'll have council comments. Under council referrals, we have, Councilwoman Bellzamini has asked to explain her and make some comments regarding her proposal. There's a resolution in front of us and then of course we have the memo that, that was written. So I'll call on Councilwoman Robin Beltzamini at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I, and I appreciate the fact that you all did some addressing of this issue while I was in Washington. And I did put it on the table because I want to have a proactive discussion, excuse me, as opposed to a reactive discussion. We authorized up to, I think, $1.78 million being put back in the budget. And rather than having to find $100,000 or whatever to take away from something, I would sooner see us allocate it to a line by itself to begin with. I chose $100,000 figure because I believe that that's the minimum. And regardless of the weight of the memo that I wrote, I know that most of us sitting at this table do not have much experience with the process of democratic governance and community engagement beyond focus groups. And therefore, I spent several pages, since I wouldn't be here, to show you what some of the different methodologies were that would lead to a richer discussion of our citizens among themselves. But of this $100,000, it is my vision that it be spent in implementation grants for those departments or functions that have a true business plan and would, under normal circumstances, apply to Kresge, Hudson-Weber, a target foundation for a grant to get their startup going, to sustain the jobs in their department to a better degree than privatization might or some other method. So it is that capital that is the bulk of the $100,000 that's in the resolution. It's not the facilitator function. The facilitator function for the public engagement piece, if anyone chooses to use it, some of that we can find trained facilitators who may give their time gratis or for very little. But the bulk of it is for grant funding for those departments that have a plan. It's not a study. We're not going to study. You got to have a plan. And then they bring it to, and ultimately, because I believe most of these will be over $10,000, ultimately, it's a double review system because the city manager's office, after they get it from the assistant city manager as appropriate, would then take his committee, review this, and decide that it needed to be tweaked, projected, or put in front of us. And then we would again, look at the memo and study it and may very well say, Mr. Zerleg and Ms. Russ or whomever, no, we're, we're just not there yet. But if we are, they deserve the startup capital to sustain their operation as our community has come to expect, or at least with our own employees. So that is the purpose behind this $100,000.
I have a question regarding that. You know, when, when we began last September, when Mr. Zerleg indicated about the $22 million deficit and all the departments were to talk about things we could do and what we could save, but we couldn't. I'm sure that some of the departments had already started having discussions about what they should do, what they could save and not save. What you're saying is if they had additional capital that they wouldn't be receiving normally, they could come up with a plan or an idea that could be implemented that would help them with their particular department. Where do you see that additional money coming from? I don't, I don't mean the money for their plan. I'm talking about the additional monies to sustain long-term those departments because we're looking at projections for over three to five years.
That is the purpose, is I would, I would anticipate that the city manager would only bring us those plans that offered a new revenue stream. Not just a cutback of what is there, but those functions that have the opportunity to be part of and have identified a new revenue stream. And that I did state quite clearly in the memo.
Okay. No, I wanted you, I just wanted you to verbalize it here at the meeting. Now, speaking to the public engagement piece that you have in the memo?
Yes, ma'am.
You envision this being a new committee?
No, no.
Of people? Explain that part.
It's an event. That's the best way to put it. It's an event. And it may be a series, it may be an event that's broken into two or three sittings or it may be one Saturday, or it may be one evening, or it may be online, depending upon the discussion that needs to happen. So no, we are not establishing any more committees with this. We are offering our community an opportunity to use their expertise and their experience to help solve this problem, to help us prioritize either the cuts, to, in some cases, identify new revenue streams. For instance, in the library, say, we have 150 people in the room and they go, well, wait a minute, we all know that my neighbors and I are willing to pay for, why aren't we charging for that service? But if the community makes those kinds of decisions themselves, it is much more palatable for them and much more easy, much easier for us and staff to implement those kinds of massive policy changes if we've offered our, our community an opportunity to share their wisdom with us, rather than taking a my way or the highway on how these cuts will be done.
Use the library as the example, but I understand that we're not allowed to charge fees for something that's already taxable, that already paid for in the tax. That was in a report from. was in a report from Kathy Russ.
I think the report said that we were not allowed to charge for what are considered traditional library services.
Right.
If they are part of a taxing institution.
Right.
But that, we offer many services in our library that are not necessarily traditional. But again, I think, Mayor, you are wrapping your arms around a small piece of this.
No, I was using, trying to get an example, so that as we discuss whether this is workable, whether we want to do this or not, that was the example that was used in your example was the library. So that's why I asked about that. I think others have questions, too. Yes. Who has, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have some comments, actually. I spent a lot of time reviewing this, and I do have to say, I know that the first time it was brought up, you weren't here. And I think because it's something that's worth exploring, and I definitely think that the basis for this memo, in terms of looking to restructure and repartner and really reevaluate, I don't think our concepts that you would see anyone up here objecting to. But I do have to say that in terms of the last time that we were here in a meeting and discussing this without you here, and then postponing it until today, I think that there were some things that were brought up in discussion that we were maybe looking to, or at least I was maybe looking to have additional information provided. And I understand that you being here gives us additional information, because we can ask you those questions and get answers. But in terms of the information that was provided, it was, it was the same memo. And there were a couple of things that I just, I wanted to point out, and then you can answer them, or if anyone else wants to join in the conversation. But I have a little bit of an issue with the timing, because I know that these are things that you stand for generally as a person in your capacity, as an elected official. But I think that the suggestions that you're making here and bringing in these ideas of public engagement would have been helpful earlier in the game. And not to say that that means that we don't have those options anymore, but I do, to some degree, feel like it's presented, now that we don't have any options that we thought we may have with the village, and it's also got this deadline, because we've got budget coming up, and this is an issue with the align item. And I know that you'll have responses to probably everything that I'm saying, so I just wanted to get through, through everything. I also think that it kind of alludes to the fact that especially in terms of public safety and quality of life, that these venues have been left out in the cold. And I know that we have to kind of differentiate, because we've been given that mandate from the citizens, that we really focus on certain things that are considered core, these things that are not considered core, we can't give them the same type of attention. But I don't think it's necessarily fair to say that they've been left out in the cold. From my understanding, and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, but all of these departments have had to, had the similar opportunities to cut fat, and also are having the same discussions with city staff right now about the numbers that they're going to provide to us for this budget session, and also the numbers that they're going to provide in the three-year outlook, which is something that we haven't historically been doing. So I'm just having difficulty, I guess, with, with the budget component. I think that the rules that you laid out, and a lot of them are based on your expertise and a lot of your background in public engagement, I think that those are things, rules, that we need to have, things that we're not going to disagree here on council, that we need to get that kind of input from the community. But I think that there has been a lot of input from the community. Groups that want to get together in a similar fashion to what you're proposing have the ability to do that. I think one of the components that we're maybe missing is who would be responsible for all of this, you know, in terms of, it may not be someone that we're spending a lot of money in terms of a moderator, facilitator, but there are still a lot of questions about who would put this together, and whose responsibility it would be to inform the people that are participating. I think we would all agree that the idea of informing the public took a lot of heat during the village election, because people weren't really agreeing, not only even the information that was provided, but whether or not providing it was somehow swaying them in a way. I mean, I think there are some really key issues that sometimes seem unique to our community, and sometimes I know that they're not, but they're key issues that we would have to get past before we can realize this. So back to my point, I guess, would be, we've talked about the restructuring of our own committees. I read word for word all of the minutes that were provided to us from meetings that have taken place between our last update and now. And you can see that the basis for some of them, some of the things that you're suggesting are there. And I know not to the extent that you are recommending them, but I think we've got to put in a little bit more legwork in terms of what this will look like, and who is responsible, and, and, you know, where we're getting these figures before I personally would feel comfortable setting aside that money. And if it's not a time-sensitive issue, then please let me know, because I don't want to sound like I'm dismissing something because I feel like it's a time-sensitive issue. But I kind of feel like that's what's happening in terms of a line item and a budget deadline. So that's it.
Do you want, you want me to answer them as they come?
No.
And that's fine. And I'm prepared to do that. If you go back to the tape of the September 27th meeting, you will find that I said, I really think the public needs to have more input into this before we move too far down this path. So, tried that, been We do have some basis for some of the public offering us opportunities. But to your point about, you know, using some of our committees in place, let's go back to the library. We've got the advisory board, we've got the Friends. They are great groups, both of them. Also understand that until the Friends did a survey of the public two years ago, they thought it was a good idea to build a new library. So having people from outside who are not part of the regular structure brings good, different ideas. And it also allows those people to talk with the people who do use, do have some expertise, and those that don't use the library, who need to be convinced that this really is a good thing to keep in our community. The timing is such that it also takes a lot of the discussion away from wrapping our arms around which $5 bill to spend for the budget, if we know that we've set aside some funds so that nobody panics. That's part of why this is a timing for before the budget discussion. And when you talk about the mayor's point about, well, our departments are doing this, and they're doing that, and you're exactly right. And I do know that some of our departments do have plans for revenue streams, but they need startup cash to get that done. And without this kind of a line item, there's only so much that they can get, and it's probably not enough. So if this will allow us to maintain the quality in both our essential and nonessential services to the degree we are able, if we can take the $100,000 that might fund one job for one year and spread it among five departments to save five to 20 jobs for five to 10 years, to me, that's a good investment. Now, the rest of you may say, no, I want to not do that, and we'll throw that at that one job, because if we don't create this line, that's what happens. That gets thrown toward that one job to push that cut down the road for a year. Or we can take a chance that we save one job for five years, or 20 jobs for five or 10, because we found a new revenue stream through giving a department some startup capital.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Powerak?
I think, I think one might help, and I haven't talked to Councilwoman Beltrameini about this, but I think I understand the concept. But I think perhaps we could use a nature center as an example. And how would you see that working with a nature center? I think that might help my colleagues in the public.
I think there's a better example, if I may, Mayor. I know that Lorraine's done some planning on the museum and has some things kind of that she's been pondering, if you can share those, if you can. But it might give an idea, and that's a concrete example.
Okay. And, but, and the other thing is, while we're discussing about jobs and people and things that could be saved in the quality of life services, the other thing is that the money would come from undesignated, unreserved funds. We haven't decided that we don't need that money for capital projects, for example, roads in the city. So it's not just a question of where are we going to put that money to save a job for a year or two. It's a question of, are we going to do things with it with infrastructure? So that's the other piece of the puzzle. So, yes.
Mayor and council, there have been some preliminary conversations, which I've shared with Mr. Zerleg and Mr. Lamorato. The Cultural Alliance of Southeastern Michigan has grant dollars and strategic planning money available currently for organizations that are members, and the Troy Museum and Historic Village is a member, who are looking at establishing strategic alliances, recognizing that if you put two organizations together, you can probably find a cost savings in operations. They are interested in looking at 20 concepts. They will provide technical assistance to develop, help us develop business plans. Those 20 concepts will go under critical review this summer and compete for a grant. The Kresge Foundation and Ford Foundations have each anned in $1 million. They are looking at providing implementation grants for up to six strategic alliance concepts. Those would be two-year implementation grants. So we're looking at $200,000 to $300,000. Obviously, that's not sufficient funds to completely implement a viable business plan, but it's a start. I have had conversations with Stacy Yankee, the manager of the Nature Center, because the museum and the Nature Center share similar education-focused missions. We serve similar clients. We are facing similar cutbacks in this budget year, and we have intersecting visions for the future. Remember the beautiful site plan that we kind of gave you a glimpse of for the museum, talked about the museum expansion being a lead project, and looking at implementing sustainable, environmentally sustainable practices, and looking at man's relationship with the land. The Nature Center has a similar vision. So there are many commonalities between the two facilities. Our germ of a strategic alliance has been received favorably by the Cultural Alliance. And the Alliance and the Michigan Nonprofit Association is willing to consider us as one of 20 strategic alliance concepts this summer, and provide us with some assistance. We, I've discussed this with Mr. Zerleg and Mr. Lamorato, and have their permission to go forward with our meetings and plans and discussions. And we have some very creative ideas. They're germs, but they need fertilizer. Obviously, any additional assistance that we can find from any sector to help us build these initiatives, these concepts, to maintain the facilities as a strategic alliance. And what we're looking at, quite frankly, is a business model that would also incorporate job training, because we look at, I have listened for 10 years to the museum and the Nature Center, and I have a 20-year history with the city, being referred to as nonessential services that eat funds. And quite frankly, we aren't essential. But I think if we're part of economic redevelopment in Oakland County and in this region, if we're part of a job retraining effort that in turn brings in a stream of revenue for our organizations and helps us fulfill our educational missions, we can be a very important and dynamic force for this community and this region in the future. So I love your idea of putting money out there that we could compete for in terms of giving us some additional resources to get us through a transition. Because I'm feel, speaking with Ms. Yankee, and the input I've had so far from city administration, we're looking at a transition that could take three, three years minimum, probably closer to five. I do now have the support of the Troy Historical Society, which I think is critical, because we need an independent nonprofit organization to help us. But they have limited resources also, and much of their funds are targeted funds that they can't just use for operations. So any additional revenue that could be allocated to our efforts, and it is a citizen-based transition team. It has members of the Historical Society, our standing boards and commissions, and other independent people in Troy who have come forward and said, hey, we want to help. We want to be part of this. I think we would welcome that, and I appreciate it.
Questions? Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Slater?
I think I'm one of the tacit supporters that you referred to in the memo. I, I do like the concept. The part that I struggle with, as I spoke earlier this evening, is with the money. And I thought it might be more appropriate if we discussed this in concert with what we talk about on the 20th, so that we, we know, we're talking about the whole pot at that point as to what we're going to do with the money. I thought it would be more appropriate for a full discussion on the 20th. And I don't know if you're opposed to that, or if you want a decision tonight. But I just think it would be better for us to discuss that while we're talking about the entire pot.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it on the 20th. My, my issue with the 20th is, I don't think the entire pot is on the table for discussion. I think it is the trails money. I think it is the refuse fund. I think it is. Now, if you want to add this as a fifth item to that list, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, quite honestly. But we're not going to see the whole pot until the 3rd of May. I mean, you get the draft budget in two weeks.
I thought I was...
I thought the 20th, are we getting the budget on the 26th?
We're getting the budget on the 19th, right?
Yeah, but that's not...
19th.
Until you've done both of them.
The 19th. I think what they're saying is there's some numbers that they haven't seen, because remember, we're, well, we're used to looking at the budgets, but we're all looking for those numbers. We won't have those until then.
I would be happy to add that to the 20th, because I just think I'd feel more comfortable seeing all of those figures before I, before I vote on the resolution.
Madam Mayor?
Anybody, who else had a question? Did you have one? Councilwoman Fleming?
Not a question, just a comment. I think Robin's onto something, and I support it. I can look at it on the 20th. But I certainly believe what she's described tonight, not spending $100,000 on facilitators, or bringing in outside, you know, people. But that's just a small portion of it. It's a necessary portion. I think this is a process. This is not something we're going to have done for the budget. You know, it's going to be a process, and it's going to maybe take a year or more for some of these groups to come out and even recognize what they need the money for. But I think we need to have this available for them. Whatever, the library, the nature center, you know, Historical Society, museum, whatever. But we need to have this seed money available. I like the idea. I think it'll pay dividends if managed properly. But like Lorraine, Councilwoman McGinnis is saying, I think we have to give this thing legs. I think there's still some questions to be answered, you know. And, but I think we need to get community involved. Absolutely necessary. We can't know everything from here and make all the decisions. We need to get some input. And from people on all sides of the issue. And it has to be facilitated by people that may do it at very low cost or at no cost. We have to find those. facilitated by people that may do it very low cost or no cost, we have to find those individuals as well, so. I like the concept, I like it from day one, I still like it.
Mayor?
Counselwoman Harlock?
I guess I don't see any downside to this for a couple of reasons. One is the request is simply to reserve funds for possible use during the fiscal year, and if something were to happen during that year, and we didn't have this, then it would have to come out of somebody's budget and they wouldn't probably be too thrilled with that, some department's budget, I mean. Basically, what you're saying is instead of having X, undesigned, unreserved, you're going to have X minus $100,000 this year, we can, we can afford to take that, and the reason for it is, I can see, and the reason why I mention the Nature Center is because I think there, there's a natural group of people that want to see, see the Nature Center succeed, and instead of having it closed, knowing that, you know, they don't have to start from zero, there could be seed money, provides an impetus, and the, the process also allows for cohesion of the group, which is another issue. So between the process and the seed money, you can leverage that into fundraising, and then we need, and then you actually have the viability of a nonprofit organization to come in and to take over something that would otherwise be, you know, imagine a closed building with the wind blowing, you know, versus a viable service provided to the community by a nonprofit. So, again, it takes a lot of work, so it's not easy, but this at least provides for something to help get it going, an incubator, so to say.
And, and the reason that I've asked the tough questions about this and spoken out, not in favor of doing it, is that my concern is with providing enough money for core services over the period of the three to five years down the road, and I think that public safety, road money, unmet needs that we've talked about for years, I see those as being crucial, the infrastructure of this community being crucial to people. It's not that I am opposed to quality of life services, I think they're wonderful, I wish we could save everything, but I want to look at it in terms of what we really can do realistically with the monies that are coming in and with the figures that we have staring us in the face, and that's the reason that I have those comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We need a motion.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
We need to suspend Rule 26.
Oh, yes.
I'll move to suspend Rule 26 and continue this...
What, till 12:30?
30 minutes, yeah, 30 minutes for the meeting, and...
We'll also have a closed session.
Yes, and, and that...
We may not need a closed session depending on what people say, you know, anyway.
Can we go till 12:30 and...
12:30.
Okay.
Moved by Counselwoman Belltrame, secondly, by Counselwoman Fleming, that we, since banned Rule 26, to continue the meeting till 12:30. Discussion of that motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselwoman Slater?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselwoman Belltrame?
You told me I could take things as they come in.
Sure.
There is nothing in this proposal that precludes public works, engineering, the police department from using this grant money, absolutely nothing, and it was crafted to be that way. So this grant money can be used by whatever service or department, and if the police department gets to it first, then the police department gets to it first.
And they could suggest it for a capital project?
That's not how it's designed to be used, it's designed to be used for things that won't be one-time shots.
Right, well, except that some capital projects are for the infrastructure, which is not one-time. Counselwoman Kirwin?
I would prefer not to vote on this tonight and rather discuss it again as, as going forward, and the thing that's helpful, actually, Counselmember Belltrame, is it does, in both the memo and the opening tonight, it does seem amorphous. When Ms. Campbell came forward and, and gave some meat to those bones, it was easier to understand. I would think in preparation for our session on the 20th, it would be helpful to have some specific examples like that, not necessarily, someone needs to present those, otherwise it's very hard to really grasp. Even the idea of the library, well, we know that the programs in fact come from friends, so that's not a, a good example, all those are funny from the friends, so that's bad. So the specifics on whether it would be that in conjunction with, or all of those different ones, that would be very helpful in taking money out of, undesigned, and saying, this is an investment, let me, let me just go on a little bit more, and I see that in part because the lead story in the weekend paper happened to be about communities ramping down their undesigned funds and the concern that comes from that. Now, in that paper, they used the 20%, and it would be wise to have that 20%, now we've talked about that before, and we agreed this time to go down to 15. So it's not something that, I, I guess at this point, I look at that with, with gravity, and that's why in looking at, well, we're just going to slip it over here and we could use it or not use it, I really want to see more meat, that's the best way I can put it in advance for that, I'm not prepared to do that on that. On the second thing, we don't have all the answers, certainly we don't, and we have received a lot of answers from a lot of people in a lot of different ways, and they've been great. I received a clipping in the mail today from a resident who said, hey, look at this, we received the Windmail email the other day, and prior, Mary Ann Bernardes is not with us tonight, but wrote a long email of all kinds of different ways, people have approached this, and really, whether they have blogs or whether they have, there are lots of different ways where people have come to us with ideas for revenue enhancement and cuts, and every time we receive those, we've turned them over, I thought, these are different ways, we might, and, and those are being pursued or looked at. Sometimes we say, oh, we've done those, but in general, we admit, any new innovative way is fine. When you say that not, it's, it's possible that a facilitator for a group or someone would come in pro bono, that makes sense, so then that's offside, that's a different thing. Public engagement is different from the line item for $100,000. Important, and I'd like to look at that in a separate column, rather than lumping it into, this is the same too.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
I'm, I, my problem with, my problem with treating them separately is, then I need to compete, then I need to ask for two lines, because there may be a facilitator that is of, with a particular expertise in an area that we would want, that may charge us $5,000 or $6,000 or $10,000. And then we wouldn't have a line to do it, then we're doing like Counselwoman Harlock says, okay, whose budget are we going to take this out, we're going to take it out of, you know, somebody, so that's why I lumped them together. And I'm perfectly happy to vet some of my own ideas on how this grant could be used. However, the, the reason I did not do that was what I have found in dealing with giving this particular body in particular over the years, specific ideas, that's what they wrap their arms around, they don't wrap their arms around the concept, they wrap their arms around which $5 bill to spend, and I didn't want to limit anybody's thinking to my $5 bills that I was going to put on the table that you could spend this on. That's why I did not give any specific ideas. And, and I still, it's not that I can't, it's still something that I hesitate to do.
Counselwoman Kirwin?
I'm not necessarily suggesting that that come from Counselmember Belltrame, however, you've had an advantage in having this kind of dialogue where we haven't, because in comes Ms. Campbell and this conversation happens in front of us, well, that's, we wouldn't have known that. So those conversations, whether it comes through staff or it comes through that, I'm not saying that you, you delineate every $5 bill. And again, remember, this council is reborn in time with the addition of different people, so that may have been an experience in the past, but I still think that before, I have a comfort level of saying, sure, let's plop that there and see what happens, I would want to have some examples. Our wish always is that with any grants, and I know this, that it, they need to be regional, they need to show collaboration, they need to show, and that seed money does, does help, but in how many different ways and, and what are we talking about, that makes a difference to me, as I say, I approach this with great gravity after seeing all of that in the paper and realizing that that undesigned fund needs to last throughout all of those lines. And I appreciate the SAMCO going and showing over years what we're looking at, sustainability does matter, and when we're talking about sustainability, where this piece fits in, it rests very well with that study session on the 20th.
Further discussion? Is it the consensus of this body that we not have a vote on the fire this evening?
I'd rather wait till the 20th than have it turned down tonight.
All right, well, let's, let's wait for, for the discussion and if we have another resolution to come forward, then, correct?
Yes.
Am I getting nods here from people?
Yes.
All right. Okay, then let's go to council comments, and I want to read off the two, one I promised to do from the beginning of the meeting, and the other one was something that happened on Saturday. On Saturday, when the American House structure fire occurred, our departments again did an exceptional job of putting forward, and the first responders, the police and fire department, activated this shelter and welfare section of the city of Troy Emergency Operations Plan, and thank goodness we had that in place for when these things occur. They worked with the Troy Community Center EMS, Parks and Rec people in evacuating 147 occupants with 66 coming from the east wing of the building at the American House, and then they were released to family members or other suitable living facilities that were located by American House employees. It's a true example of the excellence that we have in both our police and fire departments and the Parks and Rec Department and any others who have not named here who helped with this situation. Fire stations one and four were called, line CMS, and then the firefighters also called in station five, so it was a sizable fire to have that many come. And of course, as many of us have been at American House, we've seen the physical condition of many of the people that live there, and so I imagine it was a scary proposition for everybody concerned. I'm glad it was a conclusion that where we didn't hear and read about people that were hurt and injured, including our own people. We still have not found out the cause of the fire, which I know our fire department is investigating, and that's one of my worries with cutting back people from the fire department is that we're going to have less people to do investigative things because that's our full-time people. So on behalf of the council and of citizenry, I'd like to thank all of those that were involved and commend them for their efforts on Saturday. I'm sure there were a lot of prayers, both that day and the next day, and thanks. The second thing is that Bob Waldron and I met, as he indicated, he is the owner of Pro Car Wash, and he is spearheading this Rochester Road group that wants to do something positive while the construction's going on, and one of the things that he indicated is that he already has 30 businesses on board that want to do this. These would be coupon booklets that would be passed out at the different businesses so that they could, they're already coming into certain businesses there, they'll get one of these booklets, and they can then go to other businesses along there, it'll, it'll spur the things on. They're planning on doing radio promotion and some positive things. They also have said that Dan's excavating has done an excellent job in the, Mr. Saxton at Times Landscaping told me personally that he thinks they're ahead of schedule on their, I, I don't know that, but they've certainly had good weather, so that's good. They also, Bob Waldron and the Rochester Road businesses have been working with Pam Belencheck to assist them, you know, they help small businesses and big businesses with what they're doing, and Cindy Stewart has been assisting them, and they've asked questions, they've had several meetings. The reason that I'm commenting on is that Bob asked to meet with me, and I said, oh, this is a great idea of you businesses helping yourself, but we as a city in turn helping you, you know, in a small way, and I'm hopeful that the rest of the council members will see this as something, I'm sure that you see as being a positive thing, and they feel that they're doing the right thing, because they said when they had construction before, they kind of didn't do anything, they wanted to do something this time, and so I think it's a move in the right direction, frankly, and so I commend them for their efforts and Bob for spearheading that. He didn't explain it quite as much as I was going to explain it to him, because he gets excited when he's going to talk in front of the group and he wanted to tell his stories, but I gave you the letter that went to the businesses, and then he's going to do, you know, some follow-up on things, and he said he'd be happy to personally answer any questions or comments, suggestions you have for them, if you would just contact him. If you need his email address, I have that, and we have a sticker on there, you know, where you can call him, so. Those are my two things. Does anybody else have council comments? Counsel, oh, Counselwoman Harlock, then Counselwoman Kirwin?
It was brought to my attention, and actually, being in the meeting, I don't watch too many of our meetings unless I'm watching a replay. It was brought to my attention that the, the speakers are now shown from the back and not from the front, and, well, we're not speakers, we're considered a public body, and, you know, I, I could see that if, if somebody were doing something that were obscene or otherwise not appropriate for television, but I think, I think most of our neighbors that come up and petition us are generally well-informed, at, at least they're well-reasoned and they have a point, and, and most people play by the rules, and, and everybody, I think, like or not, has, has abided by the, the time limits set by council, so I don't have a concern with showing them, showing the faces of petitioners, and I would prefer that if we're not going to show people when they come and speak at the podium after spending all this money on these, these three fancy cameras, that we put it into our rules of procedure so that it can be on the record, otherwise, if we can simply go back to showing people, I think that would be a sign of politeness.
Okay, other items? Counselwoman Kirwin?
Speaking of rules and procedures, we do, do need a study session. We, we had talked about for a long time, having a code of conduct or something like a code of conduct, yet we, we don't, we didn't have time in the organizational meeting, we thought, well, we'll just look at that another time, and I think it's another time time. So I'd ask that we could also look at calendars and see, to have, to revisit our goals which have, which have changed, so we could revisit our goals, look at the code, look at, as Counselmember Harlock points out, our rules and procedures in a meaningful way, and perhaps roll that into what Counselmember McGinnis talked about just last time, the committee structure as well. So let's take a, take a look at that, and I, I appreciate that. So let's take a, take a look at that and I, I appreciate that comment. I was able to, uh, attend the Avondale Youth Assistance, uh, Volunteer Recognition and picked up their annual reports. And I do think it's something to bear in mind as we're looking at the budget because again, they have the circle, which shows their expenses and the revenue. And, uh, the city has traditionally designated funds for youth assistance, uh, as part of that. And so this is something to bear in mind as we come to budgeting. Um, I, that's a concern. So there's that piece. Uh, it was, it was a great night, Youth Assistance, and, uh, perhaps Councilmember Belltrame, you'll talk on, about Troy in a second. Uh, Michigan State University, um, through a collaboration of a number of different partners, has a great offering, which is 100 free training programs in 60 days. And I know that you all receive online versions of what that looks like, but for our home viewers, these are open to anyone. Um, sometimes for the materials themselves, there's a small charge for the handouts, but these are absolutely free and located in a number of different areas. If you're interested in, um, the Michigan Prosperity Initiative, go to, uh, www.landpolicy.msu.edu/mpi. That's landpolicy.msu.edu/mpi. And perhaps we can have something about that on our website so people can take advantage of that. But that would be open to anyone and I certainly encourage, um, ourselves to attend it. Maureen McGinnis and I were able to attend, um, a cheap walkability, $10. And I also attended the SEMCOG, uh, where they talked about sustainability and included this. There are a lot of very inexpensive or free right now trainings available, both through SEMCOG and collaborations like that. And finally, we talked about, um, volunteerism a bit. We've talked about our boards and committees and the input we get from people in general. And, uh, as a member of the historical society, um, I received, and perhaps you did too, um, a letter from Lorraine Campbell, who invited volunteers to come out because more than ever, we need, uh, volunteers to help us find a way to deliver services differently. And you had 60 people come out tonight?
Closer to 70.
Closer to 70 folks who came out through one letter and said, "I want to help." And I hear this all the time and I know that we've received emails and again, I try to forward them on, "These people want to volunteer." Something that I received recently at the Nonprofit Network was, "Senior volunteer is a priceless resource. Today, people over 50 years of age constitute the largest, best-educated and healthiest group of older Americans in our nation's history. And this is so key to us right now is harvesting all of our volunteers together who want to give back and have available time and can really bring us through this slump as our foundation has been built for all of these years through that volunteer spirit." So that's something that I think would be important to talk about, about our study session, is a new way to look at, uh, ways that we can work together for volunteerism. It did come a lot, we heard a lot of this during the future study, and then it just kind of went on. We continued doing what we're doing and never really activated that. But that's, those are some thoughts. Thank you for the time.
Councilwoman Belltrame?
I don't want to take a lot of time because if we do want to have a closed session, we need to move on. But I do want to say that Troy Youth Assistance will be celebrating 154, um, middle school and high school kids in Troy, all residents of the Troy School District, on the 21st at Athens High School. And that is an open celebration to anyone. Um, these kids have done some amazing things. And there are students being recognized from all three Troy High Schools. So I'm really pretty tickled about that, so. And again, thank you for, um, giving consideration to my proposal.
Okay. Uh, I just want to add one little thing here because, uh, after Councilwoman Harlock spoke, then Councilwoman Kirwan talked about having a study session. Look at our, um, rules of procedure and...
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct. And I want to comment about, I can't find it now, of course, but I'm, 100 billion papers here. Um, the Troy Board of Education is developing a public participation, um, code, uh, things that people must do, uh, when they come to their board meetings. It's very organized, et cetera. I'm sure, uh, there's women you know because your, what Quala serves on that. Uh, I think it might behoove us to take a look at that, uh, all of us, to see if there's some things we want to do or not do that are similar. I know that some other cities do have, uh, more of, um, information about that kind of thing. And so they feel that it helps move their meetings along. They, they have things about, um... People are not allowed to say derogatory comments about, uh, school board members. They're not allowed, or staff members. And if there's something that is a problem, they have to go through a procedure, uh, to do, if there's a problem at a particular school or whatever. They can't get up in an open mic and say that. We had a lot of that going on during the, um, uh, discussion of the millage. And it was, uh, I think, very unfortunate and uncalled for. And many times people will get up and question things or make comments about things in the community which are completely false during that, that, um, section. And, uh, so I think that's something that we need to address. I'd like to see us, uh, avoid some of that if we can. I realize that we do have freedom of speech in this country, but I think that there's also a certain amount of decorum, uh, that goes with our meetings. Uh, I'd like to ask, do council members feel we need a closed session or do you feel that, uh, what is proposed, uh, sufficient? What do you think? Sometimes we get information and we don't have a closed session. We just say, "Proceed." You're saying?
Proceed.
Proceed. What do you say?
We can proceed.
Think so? How about you? Everybody on board with that? Okay. I guess we don't need a closed session. All right. Was there any other item? Anybody else with council comments? Okay, then we're in. You're in.